Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of August 7th, 2017. Let us all rise for a pledge allegiance followed by a period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The Order of Business for Lincoln City Council is as follows. The clerk will call items listed on the agenda under Public Hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after hearing the clerk read that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, we will have immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. And so that will be the 14th and 28th of this month. Please call the first item of business.
All right. We would request those giving testimony to please clearly state your name and address and to sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Our first item is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through nine.
Hey, would anyone like to testify on this? Yes, we do.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Herbert Friedman, 3800 Normal Boulevard, Lincoln. I'm president of the Lincoln Library Board, and I'm here today asking that the court that the --
[laughing]
Grant the appointment of Mrs. Rhonda Seacrest to our board.
Okay, and Mrs. Seacrest is here? Why don't you please come forward?
I'm right here.
Okay. Just stand right in front of that microphone over there. Welcome today. We're glad that you're here.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions for Mrs. Seacrest?
I think let's let her talk a little bit about your background and all the philanthropic things you've done and organizations you've supported and community spirit and you and your late husband Jim.
Over the years, I've had an opportunity to participate in many projects across the state of Nebraska, east to west, north to south. I've lived in Lincoln since the year 2000, and since that time, my efforts have been concentrated here in Lincoln. My areas of interest are equal opportunity for everyone and arts and humanities.
Thank you very much for being here. We truly appreciate your service to our community.
I'm looking forward to it. I think it's a great time to be part of the library.
All right. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to testify on the items of the consent agenda? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I need to sign.
I don't think so. Does she have to sign in? I don't think so.
Hey, next item, please.
All right. If no one further, then we can vote on these items. Items one and two were introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Jane. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Kayla Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Showb.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christiansen.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. And items three and six were introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Jane. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Kayla Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Showb.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christiansen.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then are our public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call item 10, manager application of Jay Rungy for Carlos O'Kelly's at 4455 North 27th Street. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Jay Rungy, 2424 Green Spire Circle, Lincoln.
Why don't you tell us about your application?
Recently completed a manager application for our liquor license at Carlos O'Kelly's, and all items were completed and have that presented, so.
Okay. Are there any questions? Carl.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Rungy. I see you've worked at Carlos O'Kelly's since 2001.
Correct.
Right? Okay. And also in your application, you were one of the unfortunate people in this community who was ticketed for a water violation in 2012.
That is correct.
It's -- that was unfortunate. It was a difficult time in the community, and we, after, kind of after the fact, we revised some things on how we were done, but just you were the first one I've seen that had that violation, so if that's the worst you've done, you've had a good life. Thank you.
Well, thank you. All right. Other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Please.
Anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right. Next is item 11. It is the applications of Astra Vega, doing businesses Vega, Breezy Island Bar at the Yard, doing businesses Long Wells, BurgerFi, Rule G, Gate 25, and Buffalo Wings and Rings for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area in the rail yard at 30350 Canopy Street on August 26th from 10:00 a.m. to midnight. No oath on S D Ls.
Okay. Perfect. Quinn Small, 2928 South 25th Street. So I'm here representing the licensees. I'm the director of the bay, and the event that's going on that day is a fundraiser for the bay, so it's a community event called the Skate Art Music Festival. And the main reason we're applying for the S D L is that we can have spectator space that's on the sidewalk up to the curb of the street so that we can have the spectators closer to the skate competition that will go on in the street area. So we're hoping to close the street down and then have the festival portion and music, art, and then the spectators be in the rail yard area and then be able to congregate under the canopy as well. So that's kind of the outline of what the application is for, and we're just looking to see if you guys would go ahead and push that through and approve it. So we've got a couple of representatives from the licensees and also the rail yard if you'd like to ask them questions, but I've kind of been facilitating the conversation, so I think I can answer quite a few of them, so.
All right. Any questions? Carl and Cindy.
I guess I have to ask a lawyerly question here. So in terms of risk, if there were an accident or somebody gets injured, how does that handle?
Yeah, so we have our liability insurance extended, so we have a rider for the event from our general liability insurance policy through the bay. And then also for the street closure, we have the bond for any damage that might happen on the city property for the day, so.
Great, thanks.
Cindy?
Yeah, thank you for all you do for the community, the young people. I've been out there a number of times for young people who are involved in making music and making video and good, clean fun for our teens and a safe place, so appreciate that very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
John? Yes, and just to clarify again, are you going from the sidewalk from the rail yard to the street?
So it'd be the existing fence of the rail yard to the curb of the street, and then we would have two courses of crowd fencing to separate the skate area from the S D L to make sure that nothing could get passed over. And there'd be one monitored entry to the street closure, which is the competition area, so it's about 14 feet is roughly what the area.
Just on the east side, then?
Yep. And so the street would be closed, but the sidewalk on the east side would remain open to those businesses over there.
I assume you've coordinated with the farmer's market since they've got other areas in Haymarket?
Yeah, well, actually, we haven't talked with the farmer's market for that, actually, so. Is there a farmer's market that day? Is it still?
Let's see.
Maybe the 26th, so.
Saturday, yeah. It goes through mid-October.
Yeah, and so we have not done that.
Might contact Linda Hubka or Jeff Cunningham at the Haymarket office.
But I can go ahead and do that. I'll make sure to make contact with him and discuss that, so.
Are there other questions? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you. I'm trying to sign in for you.
Please.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
Seeing none, Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of items 10 and 11.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Carl. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Kayla Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Showb.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christiansen.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then are our public hearing resolutions. Item 12 is approving the appointment of Shavana Luster as the health director effective September 5th, 2017.
Hello. Good afternoon, council members. Thank you. I prepared a short, five-minute just information about me and my background and why I'm in public health, and so. So my journey into public health, I think Commissioner Christiansen, you asked me, or Commissioner, I'm sorry, Councilman Christiansen, you asked me what was my entry into public health, and I say it started with my parents. That was my first informal entry, informal job into public health. My stepdad was a Vietnam veteran who came back from Vietnam with a heroin addiction, and it was the early 90s. We really didn't know why he was getting ill. I'm from Virginia, and so when he was sick, he went to a hospital that was 75 miles away in Richmond, Virginia. So we didn't see him ill during his process at all. And it wasn't until 1996, when my mother began to get ill, really 95, she passed away in 96, that we realized that she had contracted HIV from his IV drug use. And at that time, she didn't get sent away 75 miles. She was home. And so being the oldest of four girls, I had to learn very quickly about the disease and how was it transmitted, let family and friends know that it was okay to still come to our house, it was okay to use our utensils, and it was okay to hug our mom because that's what she needed the most. And so I say that was my first informal job into public health, and it's what drove me to then start my entry into public health. I thought I wanted to be a virologist and study HIV and find a cure for it. And so I got my bachelor's degree at Old Dominion University in medical technology and was a laboratory scientist for about six or seven years, worked in various laboratories from the military, Department of Defense labs, to regular hospital labs, in transfusion services, working in blood bank. And while I enjoyed that work and it was very satisfying, it was very isolating because it was focused on one patient at a time, and I was, I had a drive to just work at population level and how do you make an impact at a greater level across a broader spectrum. And so I went back to school and got my master's in public health from Eastern Virginia Medical School. And from there, met my husband. He's from Omaha. He was in the military. He was in, served in the Air Force for eight years, and he was a computer operator, and he got out about that time and said, "I think I want to go to nursing school." So he went to nursing school, and we moved back here to, we moved to Omaha. And from there, I started the Douglas County Health Department, and that was a great foundation for me because I got an entry into all the kind of areas of public health. I started out in community health planning, and I worked on health disparities, assessing the community, finding out what those gaps were, who was doing what, how can we align our resources and leverage our partnerships. From there, I went on to be a case manager for the lead program, so environmental health was another component, foundational piece for me, and really working with inspectors inside the homes to identify the hazards and to provide that health education to the families to help them prevent further exposure and for childhood lead poisoning. And from there, I went on to emergency preparedness, and I was the public health emergency response coordinator for seven years at Douglas County. And that was a great opportunity because not only was I working with partners on the local level, but all the way up to the federal level, and was involved in some of the Ebola response, preparing the airport for how we were going to handle travelers, preparing the community, working very closely with emergency management for how are we going to have a response for if someone were to call 911 and with signs and symptoms of Ebola, so what was our community plan for the whole metro? And so we ended up outfitting a whole unit for the EMS that was shared, no matter whether it was SARP, whether it was Louisville, whoever, if they called 911 at that entry point. So being very integrated in those planning processes as a public health emergency response coordinator and during H1N1 as well. From there, also in my spare time, was an adjunct instructor at Creighton University in their HAP program, which is their Health Administration and Policy Program. So I taught the Essentials of Public Health class, which really helped broaden my knowledge base because in public health, you can get siloed sometimes if you get in one area. So that for me was an opportunity to continue learning about all the areas of public health and not just what I was currently doing for the health department. Currently, I'm the SARP-CAS health director. We cover SARP County and CAS County. It's a unique position because we have suburbia, urban, and very rural, so they have very unique needs, but being able to align our priorities and align our resources to serve the needs of both communities. And hopefully, with your appointment and approval today, I will be the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department starting on September 5th. And this is my family and why I continue to do what I do. My girls are Aubrey, she's three, Elisa's, she'll be eight on the first, and my husband's Tony. We've been married for 16 years. We're excited to be in Lincoln. Yes, we are moving. We just have to sell our very kid-friendly house, put that on the market, and we hope to be here. And so we're excited. I'm excited to join a well-established, competent health department. I've just heard so many great things from community members and just my experience working with them through SARP-CAS and our partnerships, and I'm so excited to be with that team and to see what we can do next.
Okay. Questions?
I got one.
Carl.
Yes, welcome.
Thank you.
I was interested to read about your work with health disparities in Douglas County, and the community health endowment in Lincoln has done some work with health mapping of the community.
Yes.
To see that certain areas that don't measure up to other areas, so your work with that will be, it's already primed, I guess.
Yes, and you know, I actually attended that presentation when the Community Foundation had their Place Matters mapping project because I was so intrigued, just, I think telling that story visually through data really does help tell the story of public health, and so I was interested for two reasons. One, to learn more about Lincoln, but also how can we replicate that across the state and in other areas, and particularly down in SARP and CAS, how can we tell that story so that people can understand how health is connected and how life expectancies can vary just by where you live and your zip code? And so I'm excited to continue that work.
Good.
Benny, then Jane.
So, welcome.
Thank you.
Good to see you again. And I'm excited that you're joining us. Just your energy level and your experience will help us continue to move our health department in a positive direction, and I look forward to you being part of our community.
Thank you. Thank you. I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Well, I also wanted to say welcome, and it's good to see you again, and Benny and I were part of the interviewing team, and I can tell you that we are truly excited. You know, we had Judy Halsted with us for many years, and we were thinking, how can we ever find someone as capable, as competent, as enthusiastic, and so knowledgeable about public health? And we landed on you, and we are so lucky. We are just thrilled that you're going to be part of our team, and you have a great team to work with in place, and we know it's hard to replace Judy, but I think we have been so fortunate to have you join our team and work with the great people, and I know that you will continue to make Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department one of the most outstanding health departments in the entire United States, so thank you.
I believe that. Thank you. Judy has been a great support. We've worked together, just director to director things, and she, when I was a very new director, was very helpful to me when I had a question. She was one of those first directors that said, "Hey, if you have a question, reach out to me," and I did on several occasions, and she was great, and I cannot fill her shoes. I attended her retirement ceremony, and I was like, "Oh, my gosh, she is just awesome." But she's laid some great groundwork, and with the team in place, I know we'll be able to continue that and move it forward.
Other questions? Thank you, Shavana.
Thank you.
We're glad you're on board.
Thank you.
Or will be shortly. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right. Next is item 13, approving the labor contract between the city and the Public Association of Government Employees for a term effective August 11, 2016 through August 31, 2018.
Good afternoon, council. Doug McDaniel, Human Resources. The city has concluded negotiations with the Page Union, and we've presented that for your approval. Some of the highlights, I'll focus mostly on economic issues. A lot of language changes throughout the contract, but most notable, this is a 2.5% increase for 2016 and 2017, and a 2.5% increase for the year 2017 and 2018. There's a new differential for bilingual pay for those employees in Lincoln Police Department. We also had some adjustments to the health plan of moving the percentage contribution for singles and increasing the maximum out of pockets. That was the extent of the changes to this contract in the economic areas.
Questions? Cindy?
More of a comment than a question. Can I just say it's just such a breath of fresh air to actually be looking at this before the year is over that we're negotiating for, and so I appreciate your hard work on this.
I hate to steal your breath of fresh air, but it really is not. It's, you know, the contract expired August 31st of 2016, so.
Sorry, I thought you said 1718 was the negotiation.
Yeah.
Oh. I feel very deflated now.
I'm sorry. I really am sorry, so. But nonetheless, we persevere.
Okay.
Questions or comments?
Doug, we had a pre-council on this, so we heard more information about this, but perhaps for the public's benefit, you could just discuss briefly what you see as the benefits of these changes, how they are helping the city manage its operations and costs.
Well, in the Page contract, again, this is not nearly as significant as maybe the contract coming up in terms of some of the changes. We've had some language changes and some of managing the overtime and the callback and things such as that. A lot of our session was really spent in talking about snow removal and how we process snow removal in this contract. And so we are continuing with a volunteer basis, and that's created some peace between the parties as we try to move forward in cooperation and try and make sure the streets are clear to snow for the citizens, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
Next is item 14, approving the labor contract between the city and the Lincoln M-Class Employees Association for a term effective August 11, 2016 through August 31, 2018.
Again, council, this contract comes before you for approval. We've been in negotiations for quite a while with the M-Union. This is our upper management. The LMCEA represents our professional managers, maybe battalion chiefs, police captains, finance positions, engineering positions in the city and others. Some of the highlights of this, a little more involved, prior to this contract, this group was on a variable merit increase and a pay plan that was known as a broadband, so a very wide range, three ranges. We have spent our time negotiating a new pay plan, which puts in place a 10-step, seven-pay-range plan, and that is the most notable change in the implementation of that, moving people off a certain percent, or not a percent, but a certain pay, and then putting them on the appropriate step, is the complicating factor, and that's what we've spent a lot of our negotiations in. This probably is the most notable component of this contract, is going to a step pay plan off of variable merit, as we said in pre-council a couple of weeks ago. But it will have a better limit to the upper end of the ranges, where the previous plan kind of expanded those ranges beyond what we felt was appropriate in the marketplace. So this lowers the maximum more in line with the market value of the positions that are in that group. Other things that took place in this contract, basically, are leave provisions, clarifying language for sick leave, nondiscrimination language. It is a two-year agreement. Basically, there's different ways in which people move on step, but again, it was put before within our budgetary parameters, so I'll be happy to answer any direct questions.
Questions? Carl?
Just, Doug, how many employees are in that union?
Roughly about 84, I think.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
Next is item 15, ordering repaving District 159 and Saunders Avenue from 12th Street to 14th Street to be constructed and the cost thereof assessed against the benefited properties.
Susie Philippi, Public Works. The ordinance to create this district was passed last year, and we are here to ask for the resolution that actually builds it. A little background on this, it was hard surfaced in the late 60s by the Department of Road as an access road as they're working in Cornhusker, so that it was never built to city standards and was labeled as a substandard street and was never eligible for true rehab. The proposed district would impact 13 property owners covering 17 parcels. The area is zoned as industrial with a large volume of truck traffic. To meet standards, the proposed paving would be 30-foot, 30-foot, feet wide with a nine-inch depth and curb and gutter. The existing paving is 27-foot wide, so the city would give them credit for that and pay 70% of the cost. The estimated cost of the project at this time is $345,000, and the city would subsidize That would make the estimated cost of $80 per front each foot for the property owners, translated meaning if an owner owned 60-foot lot, he would be assessed $4,800 and would have the option of 20 years to pay with interest. In order to get a repaving district passed, you need to have 50%, over 50% of the property owners in favor of it. At this time, we have 61% of the property owners in favor. If this resolution would pass, the plan would be to design it this fall, bid in the spring, and build in 2018 construction season. Any questions?
John? Yes, you mentioned the, it'd go from 27 feet wide to 30 feet wide, so that extra three feet, and you said with that, that the city would participate 70%.
70% of the whole project.
The whole project. How did you calculate that when you're just adding three feet?
You want to explain that?
Sure. In addition to the three feet, also the curb and gutter is part of it, the inlets and the drainage lateral leading to the main are all part of that cost as well, that they don't have benefit of now that they would be gaining benefit of.
Is this?
So it's not a, it's not a 27 over 30 ratio that calculates it. It's actual cost of adding the three feet, adding the cost for the curb, adding the cost for the inlets, adding the cost for the lateral pipes and the main.
Is this consistent with past projects like this?
Yes.
Thank you. Carl?
Yes, thanks. That was a question I was going to ask, was, I was interested in the drainage because as it is now, I don't know if there ain't none, but it doesn't look like it, okay? So that's needed. Thomas, the, in 2000, is it 2018 or 19 when North 14th Street will, that project will happen at Cornhusker?
We're in discussions with that with the state, and of course, we still have to get through our federal permitting process, so.
Okay.
We will coordinate to make sure that they're not both under construction at the same time.
Yeah, because right now with the North 10th Street work being done, people are finding themselves on Saunders a lot more often, unfortunately, than they've probably been in the past.
If you want to take bets, I'm going to bet that Saunders gets done before the federal project gets done, if you want to insider tip.
And in case there's any doubt of need, this two-block stretch of Saunders, in my opinion, is probably the worst street we have in town. There are probably other candidates, but this one should be in the finals, I'm sure.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Please come forward.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the council.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Judy Isley, and my husband and I, Mel Isley, we run Mel's Diesel Service in Lincoln, Nebraska, on twelve-twenty-nine Saunders Avenue and twelve-forty-two Saunders Avenue. We reside outside Suresco, Nebraska, and we're in Lancaster County. We are the parents of eleven children. They're all adopted, but three, and we are still raising two foster children we adopted. They're eleven. We are very concerned about the closing of the street, because we have been here thirty years, and I know the street is in dire need of repairs. We see it every day, and we, my husband and I both work there every day, so we know what's going on with the street. We're concerned that if the closing of it is going to hurt our business. We've worked for the Burlington Northern Santa Fe, done their work for thirty years, and with this closing, we have no access to get in the two front doors of our building. We're a family business, a small family, and we don't know what we're going to do if this happens. I don't, we have a back lot, but we can't access the building through the back lot. So we have tried to work it out, you know, so we could, you know, be in agreement with this, but we just, you know, we've kind of come to a dead end, and we don't know what, you know, our livelihood is at stake here with our family and our little business that we have.
Okay, are there questions for Mrs. Isley? Are there questions for staff?
I'd like staff to come forward, Mr. Schaefer or the appropriate individual.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, thank you.
We will pursue answers to that question.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
Well, just in general, as a matter, of course, with project coordination and with our development, we work with property owners. We know we can't landlock somebody, we know we can't deny them access there, and we work with them on that. And I think specifically on this one, we might have a solution already in place that we'd like to talk about.
Please introduce yourself.
My name is Amy Herr. My husband Dan and I own twelve-fifties, twelve-thirty-seven Saunders and thirteen-oh-three Saunders. We are right next door to the Isley Building. Excuse me, I was watching on Five Live, decided maybe you wanted my input. We have talked to the Isleys about allowing them to come through our lot, around the alley, or down the alley through our lot, and then around to their front door. So there will be access for them, they won't be completely shut off, because we have already told them, we will agree to let you come through our lot to access your front door.
Knowing the nature of Mel's Diesel business, is that sufficient to accommodate some of the vehicles they get?
Yes, it is.
I see some heads shaking in the back.
We have, we have parking available at thirteen-oh-three for our own customer cars, so we will be able to keep as much of that clear and free for them to come in and out as possible.
Mr. Schaefer, have you looked at some of the turn radiuses and so forth?
No, we haven't gotten into that, because we haven't had a project to work on, but certainly, these are things that are common, not common, but they're not unusual to find on projects, that we've got to find a way to keep access of some way, shape, or form. And so, that's one of the things what we'll do, is reaching out to the stakeholders, getting this kind of information, so that we know, when are the trucks coming? What, how often are they coming? What size are they? And then look at some of that. I know we have that, that one solution, but there's probably others in our toolbox that we can pull out and use, depending on the situation. The road isn't totally closed to begin with, you know, there are things we can do while we're, say, putting in the storms who are leaving half of it open at a time. Those sorts of things come to mind.
But we do vote on this today, because it's a resolution. I guess I, would it be appropriate to have either of the Isleys come forward and just quickly let them describe what type of vehicles they're having?
I would just ask that, when we-
We'll accommodate them and not let, leave them out, how about that?
I mean, promise.
Yep.
And they could come forward?
Haven't left anybody landlocked on any project yet in fifteen years.
So, and if there were an issue, the Isleys could come to the council and say, hey, the promise isn't being kept, right?
Yeah, we got, we got a lot of time, work through the design on this.
Can we have your boss also give her a pledge? All right, okay, Judy and Mel.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Please come forward if you'd like to talk.
We just want to make sure-
Do you introduce yourself?
Mel Isley, twelve-twenty-nine Saunders Avenue. We cannot pull anything like around CNN other than a pickup.
Okay, is the commitment of the city staff, that you will continue to have access to your property for the big trucks, is that sufficient for you at this time?
If I can get a truck in there, yes.
Okay, that's the commitment you've received today.
There's no way it could come from that way. When they, when they bring the storm, storm sewer back, I have probably twenty-five-foot there. These are forty-five-foot trucks. And I have truck trailers, both. And we thought about putting a door in the back of the shop, but the building has to be enforced, you know, do that, so.
I think you're going to be given information here, so you can contact the city engineers, and if there is a problem, and before the problem ever exists, you'll have the opportunity to communicate and make arrangements, correct?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
And when do you expect this project to, assuming we approve it, when would it be constructed? And what would be the length of time that you would anticipate for it?
We're hoping to, if you approve it, we're hoping to get out and start surveying in September, start working through the design process this winter, and come this spring, we've got a contractor on board, and when the spring rains end, we'll get going on construction. That would be ideal, that would be the ideal timeframe on this.
Mr. Isley, do you have some flexibility? I know there could be a, I don't know, you bring my diesel in, you know, you have mishap, you got to get to it right away, but do you have some scheduling or? With the BNSF?
I work on them every day.
I don't think we're going to resolve this completely here from the dais.
Well, you know the charge.
Mr. Isley, thank you for coming forward. I'm a little confused, you said something about the storm sewer getting moved. Are you talking about access now or when the products, projects finished?
I don't think they're going to move it, but where they're going to put it in. Ed Grubb down the road bought a business, and when they moved the, lowered the road, the driver was like this. So they had to go back on his property to lower that down, so they could get in.
It sounds like you might have some concerns about the finished-
That too.
-project, too. But I think the, we've got a commitment that they're willing to work with you on doing that, is that what I heard?
Absolutely. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Schaefer, I just wanted to ask how long the project will take once it gets started, because I don't-
Well, that's one of the things that we'll need to work through on the design process. Depending, you know, if we can close the road down totally, that's one timeframe. If we've got to do it half of the time to allow access on some of these things, that takes a little longer. And if we have to do that several times and build it in smaller chunks, that takes longer. So I would not want to hazard a guess till I've got all the parameters laid out there and figured out, what do we have to accommodate, who do we have to accommodate, how do we have to accommodate, before I can, can throw that out as to what a timeframe might be. But generally, once we get going out there, we'll want to get it done as soon as we can.
But you're flexible enough to make sure he's accommodated with his trucks?
Every project. We do that every project. We work with all the adjacent property owners.
Would anyone else like to testify? Please come forward.
Good afternoon. I'm Cody Larkins with Larkins Heating and Air, representing my grandmother, who owns property frontage on that same street on the north side. Our issue is concern for access for our business as well. Being on the north side of the street, we have no alley access, and as far as the schedule with deliveries and stuff like that, with the industry that we're in, there's sometimes we place an order and get a shipment the following morning, so there's really, there's not a whole lot of leeway there. I guess they're going to be working with people, but I know this is up for resolution now, so that's a main issue with us, is to, are we going to be able to access our business as well on the north side of the street?
Yeah. Okay, are there questions? An answer?
Every property owner, no matter what side of the street, will get access of some sort. It may not be the same access you're receiving now, but it'll be some sort of access, so you can get in there and use, use it during the construction timeframe.
Okay, I want to know how semis and everything will be accommodated fully, same as Mel. I mean, you're, you're talking about a project that has been long overdue, and now we're to the final stages of you guys want to get to work, and I need to make sure we work too.
We're going to do design all through this winter. That's the type of thing that we're going to be working with you throughout these next six months. Just if they order it constructed, it's still got to go through a design process, we still have to work with folks on, on those sort of things. It's, it's not set to where it's there. We, we just, we don't not allow people to have access to their, their property. I can't stress that enough.
Okay, well, I would like the same, you know, guarantee that we will be worked with as well.
Yep.
Under a notion that I don't get trapped out.
Carl?
Yes, thank you.
I will do it.
Thomas, frequently, and maybe larger projects, will have a, a public meeting where individuals can come and see what's going to happen and know the schedule. Could we do something like this for, for this project, just so that-
Next spring?
I think we have to.
Yeah.
Because, as shown, one of the things that we're probably going to have to do is work with the adjacent property owners to make sure everybody gets some access, some sort, and in some way.
So approximately, when would that, they expect to have a meeting like that? Late winter or something?
Yeah, late winter, maybe after the first year. It always gets tough between like Thanksgiving and New Year's, because people's travel activities that are going on. I just hate to have them during that timeframe. So unless we can get out there ahead of Thanksgiving, it's probably after New Year's that we're, we're out contacting folks, and in this case, a small enough area that we can go door-to-door and, and do that.
Sounds good, thank you.
John?
I would assume, though, that in this design phase, even before that meeting, you will consult with some of the individuals to see what would work and understand their specific needs, as well as adjacent owners, property owners, as this lady who said, they would help on access.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Yay. All right, let's move on to the next item.
All right, next, our public hearing ordinance's second reading and related resolutions. Item sixteen is Comp Plan Conformance one-seven-zero-one-one, declaring approximately one thousand eight hundred seventy-five square feet of property generally located at twenty-one-forty-three O Street as surplus property.
You again.
Members of the City Council, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director, the applicant in this case. We have aggressively gone back into what properties the city owns to look to those kinds of things that we can put on the market and sell, and we've done it more than fifty times. We have a building that we obtained when the Antelope Valley Project was being worked on, and John's probably the only one who goes back to that point in time to recall, that we used some federal money, Corps of Engineer money, to purchase what was called the Via Van Bloom Building. It was a travel agency before we took it over. We used it for a number of years, the Public Works Department had an office in that, and the, the project management was done out of that building. It's had no use since that time. We surveyed city departments, and we've surveyed the county, the NRDs and the school, if there's another public user of the building that wants to make use of it, and there is none. This is a gateway definition of the land as surplus, and therefore available for sale. We would bring back to you any sale that we make that's over ten thousand dollars, as the charter requires for your ultimate action and disposition, should we find a buyer. We've had people who've been through and are interested, but the building does require a good deal of maintenance, and so we're going to need to find, find the right buyer. When we do, I'm assuming that the standard practice applies, and the money will go into the city's land acquisition fund. We will ultimately be turning federal dollars into city dollars by passing through this process to get into the land acquisition fund. Is there a question that I can answer?
John?
Will the bubble be preserved?
It'll be up to the new owner.
Okay. Cindy?
Do you know what our purchase price was for that parcel?
A little over two hundred thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, will be?
A li, no, it was a little over two hundred thousand dollars when we bought the land, using the federal money that was there. Proximity was important to the staff, and they were right on site, so that's why it was a good location for that, but it isn't any longer.
Thank you.
Do we have a current valuation of the property?
We don't. We'll put it on the open market and see what a willing buyer will pay for us. I would say this building is probably not in the same shape it was when we bought it. There's been a number of years of delayed maintenance that was left undone. It's going to require somebody who's pretty handy to come in and make the building work.
Okay, other questions? Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
Good afternoon. I'm Brian Dahlberg with Catholic Social Services. I'm the Director of Operations. My home address is forty-two forty-two Madison Avenue. And we just, we're in favor of the declaration of this property to be surplus, because we're interested in the property. We're the bounding owners of that property, and so we've been interested in several years to acquire that property and ultimately probably just take the building down and add on to our office space and our retail space at Saint Louis Gift and Thrift. So we just wanted to make that public record, that we are an interested party.
Okay, questions? John?
Do you think with the river running in front, it's worth a lot more now?
Yeah, of course. No, it's a gorgeous property to be right next to that creek, but we own all the rest of the property, and so we'd have to really have a really wonderful client to move in there, and ultimately, we'd like, we're bound. We don't have any more room to expand or do any more work in what we do, so we need, that's, that's our only option right now, so it's a very powerful piece that we need to investigate and get hold of.
It's a piece of puzzle.
Yes, exactly, so.
All right, other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next, I'll call items seventeen and eighteen together. They are Annexation one-seven-zero-zero-eight, mending the Lincoln Corporate Limits map by annexing approximately twenty-three-point-nine-four acres at Northwest Twelfth and Highway thirty-four, and the related change of zone application of St. Rosska Lewis for a change from AG Agricultural to R-three residential on property at Northwest Twelfth and Highway thirty-four.
Good afternoon. Mike Eckert with Civil Design Group, here today on behalf of St. Rosska Lewis LLC. This is another phase of the Highland View Development, which is on the north side of Highway thirty-four and to the west of Fallbrook, and so was previously approved in, I think, two thousand nine, amended in two thousand fifteen, and so this is just another phase that we're pushing the limits of the city a little bit further to the northwest.
Questions?
Yes.
Carl? Yes. So, in, in the fine print, it talks about the need for, for having different access, access to the east.
Correct.
Would that be through Fallbrook?
It will be through Fallbrook. We have an agreement with them, with, with Nebco, their owners, on Astor Road, so from the Super Saver, we'll go through the roundabout there and then into the Highland View Development. So with the Highland View second addition, we reached our maximum one hundred and fifteen lots, and so we need to get that second connection, besides the one that's out to the highway now, built by the time we can final plat these lots. But we need to get the annexation approved, so that we can begin the executive order work in getting the infrastructure in for this subdivision. But planning's well aware of it, if I came in for a final plat tomorrow, they would say, wait, we can't approve this until the connection on Astor Road is complete.
Okay, great, thank you. Other questions? Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next is items nineteen and twenty. They are Annexation one-seven-zero-zero-nine, annexing approximately twenty-point-four-seven acres at South Seventieth and Roca Bee Road, and the related change of zone for Roca Bee Holdings for a change from AG Agricultural to R-three residential at South Seventieth and Roca Bee.
Good afternoon. Mike Eckert, here on behalf of Roca Bee Holdings Limited. This is another phase of a project that was approved with the Roca Bee Coalition several years ago, started in two thousand seven, and has continued to this day. This is the last phase that they have to do, is a but Roca Bee Road on the south, so as the previous items were pushing us to the northwest, this is pushing us to the southeast. I looked this morning before I left, and fourteen miles from one to the other, so we're getting bigger and growing, and so, but it's pretty straightforward, all residential lots, previously approved by the preliminary plat on this land.
Questions? Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? These items. Next item, please.
All right, next, our public hearing ordinance's third reading. They are items twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. They are all related to the Abbott Sports Complex, and as I mentioned in our two o'clock meeting, we do have a request to place these items on pending, no date certain, but if anyone is here to testify, they can come forward at this time.
Welcome back.
Yeah, good afternoon. Andrew Wells with Klein Williams again. I guess the short of this is, I come with no new information, really. Last time, two weeks ago, particularly Councilmember Raybold suggested we probably need more time, and I was a little too optimistic. We just, it's clear now there's not going to be a short-term solution, or a quick solution, I should say, and so, again, us as the applicant, the buyer in this deal, we're really trying to just step back, let Lincoln Sports Foundation and Abbott do what they're doing, and I frankly don't have a whole lot of information on what that is. And I frankly don't have a whole lot of information on what that is and between those two, or even individually what they're doing. So we're just, I guess, trying to stand back and wait and see, and then we'll figure out what to do next.
And so this request to put it on indefinite postponement is your, it's your request?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. And just so the public understands that that means we will be continuing to take testimony today, but the council's not going to act on this today, and we have no date set for the future when it will, when we will act on it. So we won't act on it until you bring it back, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. I just, I just don't know the timeframe at this point. And rather than guessing some more, I thought.
But we'll still entertain them during the voting session, we'll entertain the motion, and that will be moved to put it on indefinite pending. Okay?
Continue public hearing.
With continued public hearing. Oh, yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
Cindy Hayes, thirty-eight oh five Orchard Street. I've been to all the meetings, so the planning meeting and these three, and I guess I'm kind of happy that this is indefinitely postponed, but since I've been here so many times, I don't know, maybe you recognize me. But basically, even if it comes to a vote, I just want you to know that as a Lincoln resident of the northeast Lincoln, I'm against rezoning this to industrial. I know that there's reasons as a businessperson to rezone it as industrial. It's probably more profitable for them rather than to keep this as a, I don't, I don't even know what it's zoned as now, but non-resident, non-industrial. And I just want to say, kind of following up from the person that testified at the last meeting, that to choose a community maybe over just a business interest and just keep it as it is. So I can't really, I don't have anything really eloquent to say today. I just want to have it on record that I'm not for rezoning it to industrial.
Okay, questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Patty Kettlehut, Suresko, Nebraska. So I'm not a resident of Lincoln. I'm a coach of the homeschool volleyball team, and right now we have probably about thirty girls that participate in volleyball at Abbott two times a week from three to five. And it's a perfect situation for us because it's economical for us to work there. We work with VCN, who also implements or accentuates our program with clinics and that kind of thing. And the biggest concern I have is there's just not anything like Abbott for us to go to. And I know it's not a moneymaker, and I don't have answers on how to make that happen. But again, I just would like to have, you know, state that it is an asset to the community. It's changing people's lives, literally. I mean, the girls that play there, the basketball teams that play there, it's an important part, and I'm glad that the sale has not gone through. I don't have any answers, but like Cindy said, I just want to let you know that it is a useful, usable facility for many people.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you please sign in?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? These items. Next items, please.
That concludes our public hearing. We can move into the voting session. Public hearing resolutions. Item twelve is the appointment of Siobhan Lauster as the Health Director effective September fifth, two thousand seventeen, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
John, seconded by Jane. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Thirteen is approving the labor contract with Page, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Carl. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item fourteen then is the labor contract with LMCEA, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Carl. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item fifteen is the repaving District 159, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Carl. Discussion. John?
Just as a summary note from the public hearing we had, I really do appreciate Public Works, both Ms. Esposito and Mr. Schaefer willing to work with the property owners. It's important for their economic well-being and so, but it is an area that's been kind of a, a need of work for many years. We won't contest if it's the number one, but it's in the top ten of needed areas.
And I'd like to thank Public Works for being willing to commit everything except writing it in blood. So appreciate it that you're going to cooperate, so please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Public hearing ordinance is second reading, or items sixteen through twenty. Public hearing ordinance is third reading, items twenty-one through twenty-three. We had the request to place this on pending, no date certain.
I move items twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three be placed on indefinite pending in a continuation of public hearing.
Second. Moved by Jane, seconded by Carl. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Ordinance is third reading. Item twenty-four, amending Section 10.14.260 to provide specifically for a school-related speed zone on Eighty-Fourth Street and repealing Section 10.14.260 of the Lincoln Municipal Code as hitherto existing, introduced by Lamb.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Cindy, seconded by John. I'll call on Cindy and then Jane.
Thank you. I have some staff questions if I could have law come up.
Jeff Kirkpatrick, City Attorney.
Thank you for coming up, Mr. Kirkpatrick. The, the way that this reads on the notice is a little bit, a little bit misleading, I think, because it doesn't, this, this ordinance change doesn't specifically address the speed zone, correct?
It's true, yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to, to call attention to, in this particular ordinance, in the first part of the ordinance, the city, and I'm, you know, the city council and the mayor, of course, passed the legislation at some point, direct that the Director of Public Works and Utilities shall, designed by flashing yellow lights, reduce speed zones for such distances as deemed proper by the Director of Public Works and Utilities on arterial streets adjacent to public or private elementary schools or school crossings. So we're actually directing what Public Works must do, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then before the change, the next line reads, the director, excuse me, provided the Director of Public Works and Utilities may exempt from the required, excuse me, requirements of this section, those potential reduced speed zones which A, have fewer than four lanes to cross and are not adjacent to a school, or B, are crossed by, well, it said less, we've changed it to fewer than fifty students per day. Okay, so that's a permissive clause, as I understand it, that we're, we're saying, hey, Public Works, this is what you shall do, but you can exempt these certain, during these certain conditions, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so the language that I've added goes in between those two, and it addresses the permissive clause and says that unless otherwise directed by the city council and/or the mayor, the Director of Public Works and Utilities may exempt, and it goes into those same, so those same items or criteria, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so this would be something, since we've given permission for this exemption, there, this would be something that we would have the authority to go ahead and modify in order to be able to make something not permissive that was previously permissive, correct?
I'm not quite sure. Could you repeat that?
Sure. So this is something, what we're adding, we're just adding there are times when we may be able to withdraw our permission.
When the city council may.
Yes.
Yes.
And/or the mayor.
Or the mayor, yes.
Yes. Okay. So I just wanted to clarify that that's what this language does. And I know previously we looked at a draft that actually listed this, the particular school zone, but we, we took that out. We, when we, when it finally was submitted, it didn't have that language in it, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Jane, then Leary?
Oh, sorry. Leary, you want to go first?
It follows up on the quote. So that assumes we have permission as a council to be withdrawn. Can you speak to whether or not the council currently has permission in, as a legislative body versus the mayor as an executive body to otherwise direct the Public Works and Utilities Department to exempt? I mean, this, this inserts an ability of us to be a part of this decision-making process, and it's not clear in the ordinance that we have that. So can you please clarify whether or not the current, the council currently has a role?
Well, I would say that under the current code, as, as unamended, what the council has done has it's been, it has given its authority to the director. So the Director of Public Works makes those decisions on behalf of the city under the current code. And so what this version would do, what this amendment would do, would be to not take it back entirely, but, but create a situation where this council could make those decisions rather than the Director of Public Works.
Jane, then John.
Well, just a couple of things. First of all, I am, it's not a staff question for you, Jeff, but keep staying up there though. You know, first of all, I want to thank all the parents that came and provided testimony and their concerns. I think we were all truly moved by their concerns. It was very compelling testimony, and there is no doubt that action needs to be taken at that intersection, without a doubt. However, I know that Public Works and Law Department have advised us that perhaps we must follow the, the standard engineering guidelines as presented to us by them and to take that into consideration. And as a result of that, I know that, I reached out to Kathy Danic, who is on the Lincoln School Board.
Right. Right. But I think that that discussion is probably for the resolution itself.
Well, I think it's, it's pertinent to the concerns that the parents raised, and I would like to address the concerns that they've raised.
Okay, you raise it now, but not again during the discussion of the resolution then. Okay?
All right. Well, I noticed that the, the parents had specifically called out for a reduction of the speed zone from forty-five to forty. They would like to see the intersection painted so that it would be enhanced. These discussions were brought up to make sure that we were taking action and listening to their concerns. And so, working with Kathy Danic, we, we tried to come up with some reasonable compromises so that we can move this discussion forward, and we can come up with an appropriate solution to safeguard the children. The other discussion that was brought up, I think, by the parents and a person in the audience said there should be no right turn on red signs added at the appropriate intersection. They would like the, the timing to be lengthened so that the children would have the appropriate amount of time to, to make that crossing safely. And they also had said that there should be more appropriate signage indicating with the advanced warning beacon that be prepared to stop when the lights are flashing, but also at some other intersections throughout the different school areas, they have a wonderful signage that indicates children will be present. And so that would be an enhancement that we would like to see added. The last thing is, you know, because there's some conflicting information and guidance given to the city council, certainly by the engineering department as well as authorized engineering standards, we wanted to make sure that we could implement some of these changes. And we've worked with Public Works, and they've agreed to implement these changes prior to the school year starting on August fifteenth. And one of the things that we would like to see is a crossing guard to assist the children in crossing safely before and after school. But these are things that require us to make some modifications in, in these two resolutions or ordinance changes that will be before us that we have to vote on. And, but I did want to also read some of the concerns that were presented by the engineering authorities that, that pertain to this, and whether or not we have the authority to, to execute on some of the proposal that Councilwoman Lamb had presented to us.
Right of order. Again, we're talking about the ordinance, not the resolution proposal. This is the ordinance.
Well, it, all this pertains to the ordinance of, of the, the authority and the legality to approve it. I just want to talk about the purposes that we've.
Again, I'll let you continue, but when it comes time for the resolution, you'll have had your say.
I don't think you can do that as chair. I think we all have an authority to, to speak on, on both items and to.
You can, you can appeal the ruling of the chair at any time.
Okay. I will probably appeal the ruling at the appropriate time so everyone has an opportunity to, to express their viewpoints and to state their case. So I am more than happy to stop at this point, but I will make a motion shortly to appeal the decision of the chair. I would like to suggest that we make a motion and delay these next two items for one week to allow the further discussion with the parents concerning some of these changes that can be immediately put in place before the school year starts, as well as to, to discuss the possibility of approving and authorizing expenditures for a comprehensive school zone study. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to delay on, on this item for an additional one week so that we can have more opportunity to meet with the parents and Lincoln Public School Board representatives.
You're just talking about item twenty-four, correct?
Item twenty-four for the moment.
Okay. There's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Carl. Discussion on the motion to delay.
I'd like to address that, if I may, because since I proposed it.
Okay.
Thank you. I wanted to continue with what the engineers have recommended. It says, "The purpose of the MUTCD is to provide guidelines for the uniform application of traffic control devices which improve safety." It specifically calls out a certain section. It says, "Regardless of the school location, the best way to achieve effective traffic control is through the uniform application of realistic policies, practices, and standards developed through engineering judgment or studies." It further says that "A school traffic control plan permits the orderly review of school area traffic control needs and the coordination of school pedestrian safety education and engineering measures. Engineering measures alone do not always result in the intended change in student and road user behavior. It is important to remember that since this is a guidance statement, it must be followed unless a deviation is justified by engineering judgment or study. It is important to note that this guidance applies to all school area traffic control devices used and not any one specific type." And the reason why I've respectfully requested for a delay is so that we could review a proposed substitution resolution for at least one week and engage the, the families and Lincoln Public Schools in coming up with the appropriate solution and recommending a study, and not only a study on all the school traffic zones as recommended by the MUTCD, but also to, to look and explore the opportunity for crossing guards at the appropriate school locations. And I can certainly tell you that out of all the school crossing locations, this, at this intersection, this intersection certainly merits having school crossing guards facilitating the elementary schools' safe traversing of this intersection. So that is why I respectfully ask for a, a week delay so that we can have more time to study the substitute resolution and engage the parents. time to study the substitute resolution and engage the parents in getting their feedback.
Cindy?
Yes, thank you. Uh, well, of course, I've been involved in this process and I have spoken with the parents and with, uh, members of the LPS, uh, School Board about the proposals, and I don't think there's any, uh, need to talk with them any further. Um, they feel like for six years, they've been coming to their city and, and asking for a change at this location and that, uh, at this point in time, the city knows about it, has known about it for six years, and that, um, the, my understanding is, in talking with, uh, Public Works, that they're able to do these things even without a resolution. So I don't think there's any need to review that resolution. But in any case, I don't think there's any race for a delay. These parents and these children have waited long enough for action, excuse me, in their, um, in their vicinity, and that's what they've expressed to me. Um, so I, I realize, I, I had this legislation out to this body, uh, more than three weeks before it ever even went on first reading, in the first part of, uh, July. And then this last weekend, uh, was when I received the, um, the, what you're, the items that you're talking about, that we had, I actually had spoken about with, uh, some of them with Public Works already, um, on Friday. But the reality is that I was able to contact the parents right away, because I've been working with them for several months to, to get this done, and they've been working as a cohesive unit for six years. At least eight hundred and fifty people, registered voters who live in that area, know that this is an unsafe school zone, and they're wanting things to move forward. So I am not going to support a delay.
Of one week.
Okay. Yeah, I would concur on that. I, and we're just talking about the motion to delay, so I guess I have other questions though of staff. But, you know, this has been a longstanding situation. I understand there may be some, I, you, you, there's comments or criticism that we got to let the traffic engineer has the final word on this, and we'll get to that later. And this seems to say, well, gee, we're going to find a way around that and mollify it. I think the time is now to act. You know, this is a common sense in this whole mi, uh, block of measures here, the two measures. I am, I'm disappointed that a couple of my colleagues didn't consult early on with Ms. Lamb. I think that that, uh, does not follow what this body has done over the years. And to come up the last minute with this when there've been so many discussions, I, I think is, is not appropriate. Carl?
Thank you. Last week I wasn't here, but I, I watched you and I listened. Three hours and forty minutes worth of meeting last week, I watched on a screen that size. And what I heard was this. I'm a mediator, so I, I listen not only to the words and feelings, but I listen for, try to find that common ground. And so from the parents and school board members and other community people who are advocating for this school zone, what I heard was a concern for the safety of kids getting to and from school every day. I also heard concerns about, uh, the safety of, of this, uh, the, I guess, the, uh, congestion around, uh, Cahill School and problems that are ongoing there that, uh, quite frankly, this, this school zone may help a little, but it won't help much. Uh, that's a problem that needs other attention. Uh, there's some schools that have one-way streets to help ac, have access around the schools, other different pickup times, other things that you, you do. But safety of, of the kids walking across eighty-fourth Street was the primary concern that, that I heard. And then from, from, uh, Public Works and from other engineers, both who testified and who have, uh, sent us emails and other conversations, what we hear is, is concerns about safety as well. Uh, it's, it's the same concern, but, but framed differently. And as a mediator, when that's happening, people aren't communicating, they aren't talking together, they aren't getting to a common understanding. And I've been in a lot of mediations where it takes time. It just takes time to get, get people to kind of the same page and to work it out so that you see that common ground and, and are able to move on and do what's the best thing for, for everybody. And, and I think a delay is, is helpful to moving that along, to getting us to a better place as a community.
Okay, other comments on the delay? Leary?
I just want to clarify, we are going to discuss both of them. They were called together, but we're going to be voting and discussing both of them, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I'll just speak to the ordinance for right now. I also was not here, but have been paying attention, and what I learned from the public hearing was that the decision to put in a, a school related, uh, speed zone, reduced speed zone, um, deals more than with the number of lanes to cross and whether or not you're adjacent to a school building and how, and not just how many children cross the street. The ordinance as currently written only refers to those items and provides exemption for those things. To me, it doesn't seem like that's complete. And I guess if, in fact, we're trying to find the right answer on, on how to assess the appropriateness of a school zone, we also need to be talking about the number of access points, potentials for pedestrian auto conflicts. So I'm not convinced that what we have here today is the final draft that will best serve the interest of, of getting this policymaking process correct. So I would support delaying to make sure we get that part right.
Other comments? Before now, we will vote on the delay. Does it move, and second, Benny?
Okay, I was going to say point of order, what are we actually voting on here?
We're voting on the delay.
Of one week.
Number twenty-four, one week.
Thank you.
Okay?
Kind of went all over the place there.
Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
No.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
No.
Camp?
No.
Christiansen?
No. Motion fails?
Three to four.
Okay. All right. Now, discussion on the main motion. Continued discussion on the main motion. John? Mr. Kapak, if you, and also Mr. Berklin could come forward, I appreciate it. Mr. Berklin, you want to introduce yourself, since you haven't been up before today?
Sure, Lonnie Berklin, Manager of Traffic Engineering for the City of Lincoln Public Works Department.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you.
We had a lot of testimony last week, and then there was references to the MUDCO or whatever you pronounce the acronym, I don't think it's quite that, but MUTCD, I believe it is, but.
Yes.
And some of the language in there that puts what I perceived and understood as authority in you to be more powerful in this matter than the city council and the mayor. Is that a fair assessment? Maybe Mr. Kapak wants to weigh in on this.
Well, I, I think in it, as it was explained in the memo that I sent out, which was not a simple memo, and I apologize for the complexity, but I think it is a complex issue that we've wrestled with in the past as well. I think that the city has discretion under the MUTCD as to whether or not to put in signals. There is guidance under the MUT, MUTCD as when traffic signals are appropriate and recommended, uh, but the engineers, the department can look at a, a place and say, yes, the guidelines they put in, city can decide not to. Maybe we don't think we have the money in the budget. Maybe because of the local traffic conditions, we think it would be counterproductive. We have the discretion not to put those in. Uh, I think there is less discretion after we decide to put that in. I think once you decide to put it in, you have to follow the guidelines under the MUTCD. And when I say you have to, I'm saying I think the city is bound by state law in that regard.
Okay. And I think one of the things we need to be careful of in the legislation is not to micromanage this from the dais, that we need to say, "School zone," there are a couple of ways, I think Mr. Berklin talked about achieving that. But looking at the overarching situation here, uh, I would hope that if this council would require a school zone crossing there, that there could be discretion on your part, Mr. Berklin, and working within your department to make that zone. And regardless of what we do, it's not going to be put in tomorrow, unfortunately. There may be some interim measures, but the safety of these children is, is very important. And I think, as in the, this morning, I showed a little videotape or PowerPoint and summarized that common sense sometimes doesn't go into government rules. I think it's important that we use that common sense. So, I, I think that in this case, it concerns me that one individual, a member of staff, can, in a normal situation, absent our conducting anything, override us. And I, I don't know that that's appropriate. We're the legislative body, the mayor's the administrator, uh, the executive, and, you know, this is something I think that Ms. Lamb has worked with people for a long time, and I think it's, it's appropriate to proceed and work within the context of the state laws, but still get a safety measure here to protect the life and safety of our children. Okay, other questions? Okay. Um, I'll, I'll, yeah, like, this is back on the main motion, uh, number twenty-four. I'll recognize Jane and then give Cindy final word.
So Jeff, could you clarify in, in the memo that you sent to us about, about the authority that we do have to move this forward despite recommendations from the engineering team that would go against some of the guidelines and standards that they must practice and follow?
Well, I think that's where it gets a little bit, uh, complicated. When you have, and, and when you talk about, um, a community deciding to put in traffic control devices, you have a lot of communities out there across the state of Nebraska where you don't have a full, fully staffed department, where you have maybe a village board of three people, and the, the state statute talks about that governing body making those decisions. Here, where you have, uh, an engineer basically working for the city, making their recommendations, I guess where the, where the memo goes into a fair amount of detail is, again, I think there is a fair amount of discretion and along with that, some immunity for the city in deciding whether or not to put in traffic control devices. But our concern, I think, from the Law Department's perspective is when you decide to put in traffic control devices that are not recommended, uh, by an engineer, by the Department of Public Works in this case, or even an independent engineer, the question in the minds of the Law Department is whether or not that's going to remove the immunity that the city has.
So can I ask it in another way so that I can understand it a little bit better? So, um, the county engineer, the county engineer makes a decision to close bridges.
Mm-hmm.
Can the county board override the county engineer's decision to close that bridge because the, the county engineer desert, determines and deems it unsafe for vehicular traffic? Can, I mean, and I guess that's how I see this, is we are trying to overturn the recommendation of the engineers that this is not the appropriate course of action. Actually, they're recommending further studies on all the school zone to make sure that we're in compliance and consistent with the appropriate safety measures because we all want the same outcome. So I guess, can the county board overturn a civil engineering, the county engineer's determination that this bridge is unsafe? And do we, I guess I'm struggling, do we have that same authority to tell our engineering department, no, we're gonna, we have the ultimate decision-making authority despite your recommendations? I guess that's what I'm, I'm really struggling here, to, to try to make sure we get the.
Could I just make an observation on that? The county engineer is an elected official.
Well, and I, let me, let me follow up.
The county engineer is a professional engineer, a professional civil engineer.
Elected official.
Two things, if I can, if I can try to respond. I think there is a difference, because I think that the county engineer is not only an engineer, but they are an elected official. I think you do, you're kind of comparing apples to oranges when you make that comparison. As you well know from your prior experience on the county board, it's, it's a whole different situation because you don't have the executive, but you do have elected officials who are serving as executives in limited capacities. So that might not be, um, the best comparison. I, I think it is complicated because I think the city council does have a role in this regard. The concern that, that I have and why I didn't sign off on the legality of this is not that the city cancel, council can't do that, is that are we opening up some liability, um, by doing so in, in opposition to the recommendation from the, the county, the city engineering department? That, that's really my concern. And when we looked at the research for this, A, we, we looked at the state statute that says that you have to follow the guidelines when you put in traffic signals. When we looked at the case law, frankly, we didn't find any case law where you have a city engineer or an engineer working for the city say, "Don't put that in there," and the city went ahead and did it, and there was litigation that responded from that. What we found was a number of cases where, um, the city engineer said, "You should put a traffic signal in there," the city didn't. And in most of those cases, the court found there was no liability. But there is a distinction, I think, between saying, "Well, there should be a traffic signal in there," and not putting one in, where the ci, state statute talks about that being discretionary, and where the, uh, state law talks about, "If you do put in a traffic signal, you'll follow the MUTCD, you'll follow engineering recommendations." And then you don't follow the, the recommendations. What I can't do is stand here and say, "We found the case that says that you're opening up the floodgates of liability if you put a, a traffic signal in there." All I can do is raise a concern based upon the research we did.
So, can I just restate to you what you said so I can get it, make sure I got it right?
Yeah, good luck.
We are in uncharted, if this passes, and a, and a school crossing zone is installed, then we are in an uncharted territory in terms of case law.
I think that that's fair, yes.
It's better to say there is no case law. There is no case law.
None that we could find. Certainly none in Nebraska that we could find. We looked at some other jurisdictions, didn't find anything on point there either. I can't say that out of fifty-two jurisdictions out there, there isn't something, but we certainly couldn't find it.
But one could conclude then that if that's been done, that it's worked out well, and no one's litigated it.
You could do that?
That's a leap, that's a leap.
But I, I certainly wouldn't say, "Don't worry about it, go ahead and pass this and don't worry about the lit, any sort of liability." I, I can't do that.
Okay. Other comments or questions before I?
I just want to understand where we are. We're voting now to change the language in the ordinance to remove authorization to, yeah, I'm confused.
Why don't you explain that, Cindy?
Sure, thank you. In this ordinance, we exercise our discretion to tell Public Works when they must put in a school zone, but we also give Public Works an opportunity to exempt in certain circumstances. This modifies that, allows them the, still the ability to exempt unless they're otherwise directed by this body and the mayor.
Okay. All right.
Question? What are the implications of this in other realms? I mean, we are, we are for other departments, th, this idea that we would allow ourselves to overrule public safety regulations related to engineering and road design? Can we put this kind of language in other parts of the ordinances and other parts of, that affects other departments related to public safety at our discretion? We can overrule the chief of police on something? I mean, the, the implications to this are kind of significant in my mind. I'm not feeling very comfortable with our inserting this over regulations that you're saying you don't sign off on the legality of, and that we've heard from staff conflict with state regulations, which we don't have an authority to overrule. So what exactly are we setting ourselves up for if we pass this?
I'm not sure if there are extensions in other departments. I can't think of any, there may be some, I can't think of any off the top of my head. I think that this is, uh, a special circumstance where the council has in the past decided as policy to give a, a fair amount of authority to Director of Public Works under the idea that they have the expertise to exercise that authority, uh, in a safe and professional manner on behalf of the city. So I think it is somewhat unique. Now, by, by taking some of that authority back, I don't think you can argue that you've stripped the Director of all authority. I think you'll still, my guess is, still down the road, leave most of that authority with the Director, just because it doesn't make sense for this body to decide where to put every traffic signal in a city this size. It does create a circumstance where, you know, your, your second guess, you've got people working for the city, and you've got a lot of people working for the city that are professionals, that spend their life learning about the, the details, keeping up on the latest developments, whether they're doctors or, or lawyers or engineers or. on the latest developments, whether they're doctors, or, or lawyers, or engineers, or quite a range of expertise. There are situations, for example, as far as a law, where, prior to me being a city attorney, for example, there's been a couple of situations where I think the city attorney's come in and said, "If you do this, we're not quite sure how it's going to work out. You could be opening up the city to some liability." I think the situation with the closed donations is one example. I think the, the city attorney's office was fairly direct in saying, "We see some potential issues here." City council went ahead and did that. I think they're, they're entitled to do that. You're elected officials, you're elected by your voters to make decisions, to policy decisions. But it does open up some, I think, some liability and some concern when you look at the expert, the, the person that works for the city, it's their job to make professional judgments, and you say, "Thank you for your judgment, we're going another way." Which is not to say it always works out badly, but, but when you do it that way, you need to understand that you're, you've got somebody that you've paid to, to make those recommendations, and you're going a different way. And you're, you, when you do that, you're recognizing that you're assuming a certain amount of risk as a body.
Thank you. Can I, Jeff, i- is it clear that you, you did not sign off on this, this resolution that council member Lamb proposed?
We're, we're in the ordinance, yeah.
Or ordinance?
On the ordinance, but I, as I, as I think about this, and as I've talked to several of the members of the council about this, I think that you can pass this change, adopt this change, and never violate state law. Okay? My concern, when I was concerned about signing off on this as far as the legality, is it opens the door for you then to make decisions which I don't think follow state law because they're not backed up by the MUTCD or by an engineering decision. However, you can adopt this and never go down that road. And so I don't think by adopting this ordinance, you are placing the code in violation of state law.
And so likewise...
And that's a distinction, it's a fine distinction, but I think it is a distinction.
And so likewise, can the engineering department, public works, make a decision not to execute on this decision based on the guidelines that they follow?
Well, it's separate. We've got two different pieces of legislation before you. You've got the ordinance, which does not direct public works or anybody else to do anything. That is kind of an enabling legislation that takes back some of the authority by the city council from public works. Again, you can pass this, you can adopt this change, and, and really never act on it. Then you've got the follow-up piece of legislation, the resolution, where you're making a decision. And so when you do that, then you're making a direction to public works. So if your question is, if you pass the, the follow-up legislation, if you direct public works to do something, can they say, "No, I'm not going to do that"?
In our professional opinion?
I think that creates some, some conflict there, because I think you do have the authority and the power to direct public works as a department to follow your direction. Now, I look at Lonnie over there, and I say, "Okay, he's a professional engineer." If, as a professional engineer, he's saying, "This violates my, my ethical duty, I can't do that," I think that puts him in a different position. I can't say I'm an expert on the ex, the ethics of a professional engineer. I can tell you as a, as an attorney, there are some things you could direct me to do that I'd say, "Well, I can't do that, that would violate my oath as an attorney." I can't make a judgment as I stand here as a, what he can and can't do as an engineer. But I think you do have the authority to direct the department to do something.
Earl?
Uh, Jeff, this, this ordinance change, it just, it just goes toward the reduce, reduce speeds zones for school zones. It doesn't go to snowplow targets or any other kinds of traffic engineering that, that would be proposed, right?
Right.
Okay.
Just mentioned a deja vu thing. The very first piece of legislation I had eighteen years ago was getting a, bringing a resolution to bring a school zone at Seventy-Ninth and Van Dorn for Luxe Middle School.
And there is one there?
There is one there.
Okay. Cindy, would you care for a final word before we vote?
Well, I think that, that city attorneys made it clear, we have the authority, our charter directs us, that we are to direct the road improvements.
Before we go further, there's a staff question, I do want to give you the final word, so go ahead with the staff question.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Earlier, when I gave my comments on this ordinance, I mentioned what seemed to be an incomplete listing of factors to be considered about school-related speed zones. Lonnie, can you speak to whether or not this language ought to be revised to be more appropriate to the kind of messages you've tried to convey to us so that we understand when it is even appropriate to otherwise direct you to do something?
Yeah, I mean, probably just a couple of comments on that. There's, there tends to be a lot of specific language in a few of our, I'll call them transportation-related ordinances in the, in the city code, as I've, you know, been here a few years now and continue to get up to speed on those. And I find it a little bit strange, quite frankly, that we have several ordinances that speak to specific things, like a school zone, or maybe a no parking sign, or some things like that, when I think really we could simplify a lot of that, that basically says, "We install traffic control devices, signs, markings, et cetera, in conformance with the Uniform Vehicle Code and per the MUTCD." And, I mean, a lot of that just simply references sort of our duty to follow state law and those guidelines, and, and every time those are amended or changed, the city would be covered in any of those ordinances. And so I think actually the, the current ordinance language that talks about the, the fifty students and some of those specifics, from my standpoint, are, are sort of irrelevant, actually. I think the whole, the whole, the whole code would be cleaner to just kind of have an overarching statement referring to those two documents I mentioned.
Is there a way to modify the language today, if, if we're going to be voting on this, in a way that amend it so that it's more appropriate than mentioning these specific details? I had, was under the impression maybe we needed to include more details, but what you're saying is maybe more general language would be a cleanup.
Yeah, I mean, I might leave that to Mr. Kirkpatrick, but, you know, at the end of the day, it's, it's, you know, what, what standards, what policies, what protocols do we follow when we make these types of decisions? And it's really Uniform Vehicle Code and the manual on uniform traffic control devices. Those are the industry-accepted standards, rules, regulation, guidelines that we really look at, whether it's installing a traffic signal, installing pavement markings, installing a flashing beacon, installing a school speed zone. And so, you know, it sort of forces us to do that engineering study and approval and review when we look at any of these types of things, setting speed limits. I mean, I mean, all of that is, is, you know, just flat out a standard that I think our, I think our ordinances in this case get really specific, and there's probably some history why, you know, way before maybe me or any of us in terms of when those things were passed, but I guess that's just, that's my opinion.
Possibility of working on that?
Well, I, I think so. One of the things that, that my department noticed when we looked, tried to work through this is, frankly, we have some things in the code that are, in contrast, don't agree with, with state law, and that's, I think, inappropriate. And so I think I would agree with Lonnie. I don't think it makes sense to just make, take out a couple of lines here. I think what we would make more sense would be to go through and, and do a, a one-time matching of, make it more general, but make it also more consistent with state law.
Sounds like it's a good idea.
Are there other staff questions or comments before I give Cindy the final word and call the roll?
Thank you. Do I have the word? Thank you. Okay, thank you very much for your time. I think it's clear from our charter that we're directed to direct the improvement of our city roads. I think we have, we do, in some instances, delegate some authority, as in this particular ordinance. We, but sometimes we exercise our authority too, like we tell them when they shall build, and there doesn't seem, there's nothing in there that says they should only build it when they think it's right. You can imagine a situation where there's a new school being built, and we may decide we want something to go in there, but there aren't pedestrian counts there yet, and there's not a four-lane highway yet, but we could direct them, even though it's contrary to, there's not, they're not directed, they shall do it. But this just basically withdraws exemptions after, after careful consideration by the council and the mayor. And so I, I think this is definitely within our authority, and it doesn't, it doesn't create, I don't think necessarily anything problematic, and it does only deal with specific situations. But this is the ordinance that law put forward to me, that we probably needed to work on in order to, to explore the resolution. There's nothing contrary to the law in it, and this body, I hope, will support it.
Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
No.
Gaylor Baird?
No.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
No.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Motion carried, four to three. Next then is item twenty-five, a resolution in support of a school-related speed zone on Eighty-Fourth Street and the appropriation of one hundred fifty thousand dollars from miscellaneous budget contingency to safety and operation improvement program to fund the creation and installation, introduced by Lamb. So moved.
Second. Moved by Cindy, second by John. Cindy?
Yes, thank you. If, I have some staff questions for Lonnie, please. And probably Jeff. They're pretty closely related, so. And Jeff, I should have called you up first, because I'm just wanting to clarify some things from the, from the last thing. Basically, what we're talking about in this particular situation is engineering judgment. And my understanding in, in visiting, what you said earlier, is that there, we could, we may be liable to someone if they get hurt because we put in a school zone to slow down traffic, where the engineer's judgment says, "Don't do it." But, and there's no case law to support that, because that's maybe, but if a child gets hit and seriously injured or killed by a car traveling forty-five miles per hour, we avoid liability as a city by not putting in a school zone because we can blame it on the city engineer.
Well, I wouldn't put it that way. I mean, when you start out, you've got a car hits a pedestrian that's presumably has a right-of-way. The driver is at fault, we start with that.
Okay.
But where you could, I'm sure you, you would, as a practicing attorney, agree with me, you might well see that situation happen, and the child is, is badly injured, the plaintiff's attorney recognizes that there's only twenty-five thousand dollars in insurance, or maybe the car that hit the, the child is uninsured, so you're looking for other, perhaps deeper pockets to help pay for the cost of the injury to the child. And in that case, you may well look to whether there are standards in effect. And if there are, and the, the city did not follow those standards, you may well make the argument to the court that you've got standards that all communities across the country follow, they were not followed in this instance, they were a contributing cause to that driver hitting that pedestrian, and then they would try to pierce the, the government immunity that the city would ordinarily have. Would that be successful? I, I don't know. Like I said, we didn't find cases like that. So, all I'm saying is it, it's more of a possibility than if we would have found cases and said absolutely not.
So you found cases that say, said if we fail to do something, to put in a sign or a signal or something that was recommended, if we fail to do that, that's where we are open to liability?
Uh, no, there was one case, it was perhaps an outlier, it was a rather confusing case, but most of the cases said if a sign is perhaps indicated by the guidelines, and the municipality doesn't put in a sign, the, the municipality is not liable, because there's a discretion as to whether they follow the recommendations or not.
Okay. Thank you, so, thank you very much for answering those questions, I appreciate it. Thanks for coming forward, Lonnie, I appreciate that. So, as I understand it, and we had a little conversation before the meeting today, before school starts a week from today, public works can put in a no right turn on red sign for traffic going west or east on Leighton, correct?
Eastbound to southbound is the direction we've been looking at due to that retaining wall at the southwest corner and, and the bike trail.
Okay, and did you say that they've already begun work on that?
Yeah, we've, we've had a list of some of those operational and safety fixes as part of our Greenlight Lincoln improvement, looking at all those individual intersections. And so a few of the things that we've, we've looked at doing out there are the no right turn on red in that eastbound to southbound direction. Some of those improved pedestrian timings, which some of that information has been input today, but we're also working with the city consultant team. They're looking at an implementation schedule in September and October to put in the new timing plan information, so there will be some more traffic signal timing improvements coming that I, I think will be safer out there as well, some of these all-red clearance intervals, and some adjustments to the yellow change intervals.
So, we don't need a resolution for you to do that?
No, those things are all in the works. There's a basic maintenance item, I know there's been some, you know, with all the discussion that's been had, just a, an ask for us to touch up the white crosswalk markings out there. Those are simple kind of maintenance things, ongoing things that we can, we can sure get addressed and, and get done.
Okay, and do you, do you know, is there a plan to, to repaint before school starts?
Yeah, that's, that's the plan. I know that's coming quick, and, and next week, but with a few of these things, not maybe wanting to wait until that September to October timeframe, we're trying to get out ahead of that. So the, the signing installs and the marking, those things, I think we can get to ahead of, ahead of school, so, yeah.
And then you and I also talked, I called it a delayed green, but I think you called it an all-red. Can you tell us what...
Yeah, one of the things we're looking at with the, our signal timing guidelines, which have been put together through our consultants, working on the Greenlight Lincoln initiative, is just to make sure that we have latest and greatest industry standards with some of those signal timing parameters, and won't get into a ton of detail, but that's basically just, we have a lot of intersections across the city that historically, because of the flashing yellow arrow or lack thereof, some of the turning phases, we haven't always had a, an all-red clearance interval. And really what that is, is a, a brief interval of a second or two where all four approaches of traffic are stopped. And because of that, we're, with those new guidelines and some of those recommendations, we're, we're putting those in now as we go through and address these, these timings at intersections, so should, should help improve some of that safety. We've looked at some other things with some of the minimum walk times and pedestrian crossing times as well, so.
And so when you and I spoke, actually, right about, maybe just before I introduced my legislation, and we spoke about, about this particular resolution, you, we discussed the time element to put in a school zone, should this body pass it and the mayor sign it? And you had indicated it was probably what, three to five months out, and with, depending on winter, it may not be till spring, is that right?
Yeah, for a typical construction project like this, if we were go, if we were to go put a speed zone really anywhere with advanced flashers, it's probably a, you know, a couple of months' worth of some design process, and then it would be lead, and it'd be a, probably a, a couple-month construction project, so total end-to-end for, for a, for a project like this, it would be probably four to six months.
Good, so I appreciate you working on those other things early, thank you. I, I want to just make reference to the white paper that you did on, on traffic signals, or, excuse me, school safety zones that was distributed to us. So, one of the things, well, I guess it was addressed by the parents last week. There was, the white paper said that school zones are discouraged in these certain circumstances, and, and that's from MudCo, correct? And your engineering judgment, the white paper that said they're discouraged when, for instance, a school is an adjacent, and there's fewer than two or four lanes and that kind of thing, is that correct?
Right, we basically conduct engineering studies to, to provide guidance on appropriate locations for the application of, of a reduced-speed school zone.
Okay, and so that's what they addressed, the exceptions that were made. And I presume that those exceptions that were made were signed off on by someone with an engineering degree in order for the city to do them, correct?
In this location?
Well, no, in, in multiple locations across the city, they introduced. They introduced, for instance, where it says, where there's not a signalized intersection. They brought up the Thirty-third and Vine Street, uh, school zone, and I'm guessing someone signed off on that, someone from the engineering department. Would that be accurate?
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't have the history on all of those projects, I mean, standing before you today, but anytime we install a, a public works project, the installation of public infrastructure, I mean, it requires a set of design plans, specifications, a full set of contract documents to be bid for construction.
Okay, and one of the things that we... Okay. And one of the things that we were told, we had a couple meetings with the parents and that one of the things that they were told was the forty, that you would prefer or school zone shouldn't be put in unless it's, the transition is less than twenty miles an hour, well, fifteen or less. I think you said forty miles to twenty-five or less than that, correct?
Yeah, we've currently got the forty-six locations citywide and forty of those actually have regulatory speeds of thirty-five mile an hour and the other five are at forty mile an hour. We don't have an instance where we have a forty-five mile an hour speed limit with a twenty-five mile an hour school zone. We do have the higher-speed installation out at US Thirty-four, which is a sixty mile an hour down to a forty-five. So there's a fifteen mile an hour differential there. So just in terms of the speed limit only, that's, yeah, that's generally been the idea is to not exceed kind of that threshold of a large speed reduction.
So the federal, I introduced or talked about last week, the Federal Highway Safety Transportation Administration indicated there's nothing in Mud Code that prohibits going from forty-five to twenty-five. And then I looked into state statute and our state statute prohibits reducing speed or a speed differential greater than twenty miles per hour. So that would be forty-five to twenty-five, correct?
I believe that's accurate, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Now, and last week you talked about crash data at the different locations. And I know that we heard from the parents, the data about pedestrian accidents and the fatality rate and serious injury rate of accidents at different speeds. And that's their concern, of course, is the safety of their children as it should be. And that certainly should be a strong concern of ours as well. And they had cited a couple studies, a number of studies, it says, the comparables, that said that like between twenty and twenty-five or thirty miles per hour, there's maybe a twenty up to and maybe lower than twenty percent chance of fatality. But when you bump that up to thirty miles an hour, you reach fifty. And when you bump it up to forty miles an hour, you reach eighty percent chance of a fatality. So are you familiar with those studies?
Yes.
Okay. So you understand the concerns of these parents of not wanting to put their kids out there to be hit. If someone's going to run the light, they'd rather have their child face a twenty-five mile per hour vehicle than forty-five.
Yeah, and that's why our preference really is to have those children cross at zero mile an hour while the light is red at the current existing traffic signal because we don't want them to get hit at twenty-five mile an hour either.
That's correct. And we don't either, but we all know that not everyone obeys the traffic, the law. Right now, we have them stopping from forty-five to zero. That's the theory, but that doesn't always happen. And so they're talking about slowing us down, slowing them down. When, here's another of my concerns. When we were in the first PTO meeting, you and I back earlier in the year, the parents were talking about this school zone. And you said to them, and me, I was there also, "You're asking us to slow down traffic in a corridor where we're trying to speed the flow of traffic." And that concerns me, but what concerns me about it, it seems to point out that there are competing priorities here. And I recognize that you're an engineer, but I recall visiting with some folks at first and I can't believe he said that. I mean, we're worried about the lives of our children. And so that's concerning. The other thing...
I wasn't at that PTO meeting. That was another staff member, but I do remember your comment about that and with Charles and those folks, so, yeah.
Right. Okay. So I'm sorry. I apologize. I think it was Mark, which harms from your department, now that you say that. So I appreciate that. So what we're talking about here is engineering judgment. And so I want to talk about just a couple things. Let's talk about the roundabout at Fourteenth and Superior. That was placed in place and signed off on as meeting engineering judgment. Would you agree with that?
Yeah, those design plans would have been signed and sealed by a licensed professional engineer for construction, yes.
Okay. And yet that became, for some time, the most dangerous intersection in Lincoln.
I would respectfully disagree with that.
Well, that's how it was reported. So, okay. And there's no doubt that there were a lot of crashes?
There was an increase in number of crashes. There was a dramatic decrease in the severity of the crash type.
Okay. And that's because it's a slower speed going through there?
It's really reducing the number of conflict points at the intersection.
And then, you mentioned the Highway Thirty-four school zone, and that goes from sixty to forty-five, correct?
Yes, that's the current one out at the location there by Fallbrook.
Okay. And you and I talked about that, and that would have had to undergo scrutiny by Public Works and engineering judgment, correct?
Yeah, I believe that to be true. That sixty to forty-five drop out there was installed, I believe, back in oh-nine.
Okay. And at this point in time, would your engineering judgment put that school zone in out there?
Uh, no, I would not.
Okay. So engineering judgment can change with engineers. Is that correct?
I would say the industry standard is to follow the application of the MUTCD and our rules and our state law and our guidance. And I don't believe as an appropriate location that that current speed zone satisfies that.
There's no reason to believe that they violated anything by putting it in there, is there?
You know, it predates me and I wasn't here, unfortunately. But I know that the data we have reviewed since is going to result in the removal of that location.
So the final thing that really, that concerns me is when we met, you indicated to me that even if this body passes this legislation and the mayor signs it, that you would not sign off on it, nor would anyone in your department. Do you recall that conversation?
That is correct.
Okay. And so you would, do you believe that it would get done?
Um, I don't believe so. I think the delivery of that project would be physically not able to happen because of that.
Okay. And so that's a lot of power. So you have more power than the mayor and the city council, in your estimation?
I wouldn't say that. I would say as a licensed professional engineer and as one of the three thousand professional traffic operations engineers on planet Earth, we have a duty to uphold health and safety of the public as a civilian. And so really, in the Nebraska Engineer and Architects Regulations Act, it requires us prior to placing that seal and a stamp on a set of documents to make sure that as an engineer, using your engineering judgment and all the guidelines and rules and regulations that we're required to follow, that, you know, we agree with that and believe that that is a safe and applicable installation. I don't believe that this location, as one of the tools that we could use to make pedestrians safe, is appropriate at that location. So, yeah, we would not be able to sign off on that. If a child got hit in the crosswalk after application of a reduced school speed zone, there would be enormous liability, I believe, for myself as a licensed engineer, my staff, or any of our local consultants that may be involved in that design. So I don't think, the problem with this location is we can sign a resolution, similar to we can sign a resolution to, you know, design a culvert that causes flooding or for a bridge that doesn't satisfy structural loads. I think the carrying out of that project is where it becomes a difficult...
Your department would refuse to sign off on this project, no matter what?
We would look for other measures to continue to implement out there at that location to continue to make it safe. We would not necessarily sign off on a reduced school speed zone at this location based on the studies and the data that we have to date. That's correct.
Can I call in Mickey?
Mickey Esposito, Director of Public Works and Utilities.
Thank you for coming up, Mickey. So I have a little concern because the other day when we had our hearing, you said you're not an engineer, correct?
I'm an attorney.
Right. So you're not an engineer.
I'm an attorney.
Okay. So you're not able, though, to exercise engineering judgment independent of your staff? That's my question.
My staff, who are qualified with a professional engineering license, they have delegated authority to stamp plans. We also use independent consultants to exercise engineering judgment and stamp plans. So everything that Lonnie is telling you, there is a pragmatic impediment to signing off on this order to install. You already have an opinion of the city traffic engineer that is contrary to what you're trying to do. And what you would have to seek out is an independent engineering opinion, that this is safe to install and that it follows MUTCD. So we would, you know, if this resolution passes, we would have to seek out an independent engineer to do that. And Lonnie, what Lonnie and I and other engineering consultants have come forward to say in letters that they've shared with you, including ACEC, is that they don't feel this is a safe application. They cannot, in good conscience, sign off, stamp that plan with their professional engineering license in the balance.
So as far as this Highway Thirty-four, school zone, were you in your current position when that went in? No?
No, I was not.
Okay. So if you disagreed with the safety of that, you don't have the... There's no way for you to exercise independent engineering judgment over your subordinates? Would that be accurate?
I would only do so if it was in conformance with the law and it was safe for children.
But don't you have to be an engineer to do that?
But I would ask for other engineers to examine whether they believed this was safe for children and could sign off per the MUTCD. And what we're hearing is that they cannot.
Thank you.
Jane?
Well, what I hear and see is really somewhat of an impasse between executing on something that we all believe in. We all want to ensure the safety of this intersection for our most valuable commodity, our children. And they're all our children. And that's why I would like to introduce my substitute resolution, which would allow you to do that comprehensive study of the school crossing zone, working with an independent consultant and coming up with the advice and recommendation. But more importantly, it adds that component about school crossing guards. Personally, I've driven that intersection and I can't imagine permitting my elementary school child to ride their bike or even cross that without an adult supervising them. But I don't know that for certain because I'm not there when I see all these children cross. And I don't know if their parents or an adult or a volunteer group is present. So that's why the substitute resolution would authorize your department to do the necessary research, to work with that independent consultant, to advise us appropriately on the best solution for safeguarding our children. But more importantly, they would also tell us that this is an intersection, I think, that merits a school crossing guard to facilitate that safe transmission.
Seems like you're talking to her, but you're actually moving a resolution, a substitute resolution. Is that right?
Well, may I do so now?
Yes, that's the one I was asking.
We're on the ordinance right now.
Well, no, we're done. The ordinance has passed.
We're on the resolution.
So I'm just asking you if you're making your motion right now.
I would like to make a motion to introduce a substitute resolution, number A, that you should all have a copy in front of you at this point. And just, if I may, just walk through briefly.
Let's get a second. Motion by Jane, seconded by Carl. Discussion. Jane?
Yes, thank you. Basically, it emphasizes all the things that Councilwoman Lamb has worked on and we have discussed about implementing elements and executing on those elements immediately to allow us this opportunity to move forward this resolution, to enact the comprehensive study, not just of this school zone, but all the other school zones throughout the city of Lincoln. And I believe and I understand that Lonnie has started that process. And hopefully, this will be maybe a three to six-month process so that we can continue to move forward on the appropriate safety measures for this intersection. But in the meantime, they're going to move forward on a lot of the things that Lonnie, you have addressed and more importantly, authorize the expenditure of seventy-five thousand dollars for this independent analysis and study so that we can move forward in the most appropriate direction, as well as the added comprehensive school zone study on feasibility of a crossing guard program specifically for this intersection and other intersections throughout the city where the independent consultant deems it's appropriate and trying to find a way for the funding mechanism to go forward on that. But I do think it's important that we slow this down, implement as many of the safety measures that we've talked about so that we give some assurance to the parents that we are trying to move forward based on their concerns. And I think this is somewhat of a good compromise to keep things moving within a very short window of time and making sure that we are doing the absolutely correct things.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, and we're in the discussion phase. Other discussion on this substitute resolution. Carl and Cindy?
Thanks. Actually, a question for my colleague. Jane, the seventy-five thousand dollars for the school crossing guard program, when would that take effect?
Well, it's not for the school crossing guard program. It's for the analysis and study of the school crossing zones throughout the city of Lincoln as well as school crossing guard program for specific intersections that are called out to be, to merit that.
That's part of the study?
It's a part of the study, yeah.
All right. Thank you. If I could ask, Lonnie, thanks for the immediate steps that you're talking about doing. I think that's helpful. And you did indicate that you have started a study. So how were you in that process? And what would that, what would that whole study involve for you to be complete?
Well, basically, what we've done under my tenure is looked at these forty-six locations. We've started to do basic comparative analysis on, you know, what is the existing speed limit that they fall within? Is there the presence of a full traffic signal, a pedestrian signal? Are they uncontrolled? We've documented the distance that they lie away appropriately or not appropriately from the proximity of an actual school building or school grounds. We've documented the roadway type, the kind of functional character and classification. And so we've done a simple sort of high-level purview of those items. And we've got, you know, probably fifteen to twenty of those forty-six zones highlighted as we know we need to dig into those further. So I guess if we looked at a citywide study, you know, to help kind of finish up that work, I think we'd be able to scope pretty detailed with a consultant group to say, "Hey, we want to look at those ones that we've already started to draw some conclusion from." There's certainly probably some data collection needs that will occur at a few of those. But we've got a lot of good data at many of them. I think it's really a, probably a document that would talk about those existing ones, but also talk about some of the schools where maybe we don't have school zones. And maybe there are roadway sections that are really applicable to implementing school speed zones in locations where we need to be addressing safety. We're undergoing a citywide crash study effort right now with HDR Consulting that's identifying five years' worth of crash data. And I've specifically directed them to have a chapter focused on pedestrian and bicycle safety. And I think what's going to come out of that here towards this fall and into the end of the year is probably some hotspot locations, maybe school-related, maybe not, maybe downtown where we need to be implementing some other things. And so I guess in terms of this effort that maybe you're referring to in a proposed resolution, I think it would really be scoped to look at those existing locations. But certainly, we probably have knowledge of a few other schools and maybe some of those that are on a, you know, a potential list. And then I think the crossing guard program, some vetting of that process, whether it's privatized, whether it's city-managed, the application process, the training procedures, the guidelines. There's lots of really good peer cities, colleagues that I have across the nation that have implemented citywide crossing guard programs. And I think we could not reinvent the wheel but glean some expertise from what's worked well in some of those and put in maybe some of those recommendations to a study to do something broader and better. So I think that's what I would see as a, a study effort.
That, that sounds good. So we also heard the testimony from, from parents concerned about the congestion around Cahill School, which is, I think, maybe a separate issue from, from this crossing. Would, would your study look at that and, and similar kinds of?
Certainly it could. Those locations would be identified. I did want to mention, we, we are engaged right now with LPS and with a consultant to cost share in a study that's looking at about a dozen individual school sites, primarily for some of the pickup, drop-off and circulation issues. We've had lots of conversations in months past with Scott Whees Camp about that effort. And so there, there's a consultant engaged in some of those sites right now. And I think what we'd like to do is see how those recommendations come out. And, and some of that's going to be more driveway and onsite focused. Certainly, it might impact some of the public streets as well. And I think we'd kind of like to continue that maybe as a separate effort with LPS continuing to pick off some of the individual school sites. So this is probably a little bit separate from, from that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Cindy, you got a question?
No, he asked my question. Maybe I'll ask him later.
I'm going to ask, I have a couple of questions for Jane. First of all, this $75,000 number, where did that come from?
That came from, I think we've asked Public Works what would be, in their estimation, the reasonable cost to work with an independent consultant and continue to build on some of the data that Lonnie has researched.
So I'm going to offer, pose you an if-then question. If this substitute resolution does not pass and the main resolution passes, then could you bring this back as a separate independent resolution?
I am not sure. I don't think so because I, I think we want to get to the bottom of this. And I think either way, we're going to have to work with an independent.
This is talking about studying crosswalks. We could do that even if the other passes, right?
In particular, it's really focusing on the Cahill Elementary School.
So you would be unwilling to bring this back, modifying it for the, take the Cahill out and just talk about the whole city? You would not be willing to bring this back?
Well, it, they, this embodies the whole, all the school zones, not just Cahill.
That's exactly what my point is. You wouldn't be willing to bring this back as an independent resolution saying, we're authorizing this citywide study?
Well, I, I was concerned about the expenditure in trying to, to get to a solution for, for Cahill as quickly as possible. But it can be, I mean, it certainly can be done that way. But I guess the concern was, I guess the concern was, I would be happy to, to do either way, but I wanted to make sure that we were taking some action based on the concerns of the parents that specifically focus on Cahill Elementary. This has broader implications for other, other schools as well. But I guess the important thing was to also work with Public Works to make sure that they, we had an independent contractor or study out there to, to validate that this is the appropriate course of action on, particularly at 84th.
Learyn, oh, first of all, John, you had a question, didn't you?
I've got several.
Okay, John, then Learyn.
And Mr. Kirkpatrick too, you might come back up. I heard you earlier when you and Mr. Berklin were talking. You made the comment, if I understood it right, that the standard was the engineer's judgment.
This is, this is on the amendment, right?
Substitute resolution.
Substitute resolution.
Okay, well, let me go to that. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll go to the substitute resolution. Okay. Well, I'm kind of confused here and maybe Ms. Esposito, since you're overseeing the department.
I apologize.
Thank you. You know, it appears you're already starting to study. I mean, Mr. Berklin has made comments on a number of school sites already. So that's ongoing, I think, as our council chair said, you know, this is.
Could I offer a point of clarification on that? This is about an ongoing study by traffic engineering and this is about expediency. If we want an answer within three to six months, then we would have to hire some outside help to, to do that. That was sort of the motivation for bringing it forward and also doing it through an independent consultant firm. Certainly, our staff could do it. It just might take longer because we have limited resources. So I just wanted to offer that point of clarification for, for why.
Ms. Rabelt, she directs this to this particular Layton and 84th. Mr. Berklin testified that he and all the engineers, traffic engineers he knows among the 3,000 would not agree to the 84th and Layton school crossing. So how can you do a study if none of them agree to it?
You can do a study, but what we're telling you is that more than likely the, the order to install won't have the support of, of an engineer, of a professional engineer. They have to sign off on safety and they have to sign off that they're, it's compliant with MUTCD. Our traffic engineers, our city traffic engineers cannot sign off on either. They strongly believe this is very dangerous for children.
I'd like to think, keep things orderly here. So I'd like to keep this discussion right now about the substitute resolution only.
That's what we're talking about.
Okay, because it sounded like you were talking about the main resolution.
No, it's, it's, John is going to the point, and John, may I add this? It says, for the engineering studies, it is important to remember that since this is a guidance statement by MUTCD, it must be followed unless a deviation is justified by engineering judgment or study. And so that's why it needs to be independently studied so that their recommendation for a deviation in the guidance that they're to follow.
But your study does not direct that. Your study directs.
A comprehensive school zone study to examine the feasibility of a crossing guard.
That's, that's a very specific, well, as, as what you're reading is general.
But it also goes on improvement program in the Public Works Streets and Highways Capital Improvement Project in order to pay for the comprehensive school zone study to include an examination of the feasibility of a crossing guard. But it's in the whole comprehensive school zone study. But in particular, it will be addressing the matter that's before us, which is this, this school zone possibility. And making sure that it, we need to have the study done to determine if a deviation is required and necessary and in compliance so that we can actually execute on that order.
It's embedded in it. Okay, let's go back to John and his questions.
Well, I appreciate that. I wouldn't mind on a parallel basis, looking at this and threshing through what we're looking at. But on the instance situation of 84th and Layton, what I'm hearing is that there's no engineer that's going to approve that. That, and this is a subjective thing, but yet Mr. Kirkpatrick says this is a standard.
It's not a subjective thing. It's based on.
Traffic engineer opinion is not a subjective?
No, it is based on data and research. And in fact, we have two locations in Lincoln where the installation of school zones were inappropriate. They need to be removed and looked at. So we're sort of warning you about data that we have where we're having more crashes. And when you create an intersection with more crashes, you create an intersection that's unsafe. And we have that at 84th Street, South 84th Street. We have that at US 34. So we shared that objective data. And that is one of the major reasons that this is an inappropriate application and our engineering professionals can't sign off.
On your, I don't know how, how many traffic engineers we have in the department, but not that many if there are only 3,000 in the United States.
But however, you have a letter from ACEC and they are telling you the legitimacy of that data, the legitimacy of that research. They are standing behind the MUTCD as their bible. And I, I know it's very difficult, but from the dais, you would not tell us how to undersize a water main. You just wouldn't do that. This is an undersizing of a, in, piece of infrastructure. And they're telling you that that's unsafe. So that's the opinion that we've gotten officially from ACEC. You know, but we will, we are more than willing to have this comprehensive study with the 84th and Layton embedded in it. But we absolutely need an independent engineer to justify and stamp those design plans.
Well, I suspect you said you were also an attorney and you know, at times we attorneys, when we litigate, we'll go forum shopping. And if the Eighth Circuit doesn't like something, we may say, well, let's go to the Ninth Circuit. Well, maybe not the Ninth Circuit, but one of the other circuits is more amenable to a decision. So it sounds like, you know, from our prior passage of the ordinance and now with the original here, that if you need to go forum shop for a traffic engineer, surely one of those 3,000 is going to listen a little bit more.
Well, as an attorney, and you know that our professional licenses require that we follow the law. And we are under state law in this matter and we cannot legislate away the law of land. And that's how it's seen here. So we have taken a sworn oath to follow the law. But we're also very interested in making sure kids are safe. And we don't have an engineering.
Trouble believing, or I, I believe you're staying that. The actions though, given this situation and the concern of the parents for, I think Ms. Lamb said, six years and all, does concern me. And, you know, you're talking about the engineer's judgment and if there's a traffic engineer.
An engineering study is what's required.
No, it says or. So we, in the MUTCD or wherever it is, you can tell me, Ms. Lamb, I'm getting things confused here. But regardless, it says engineering study or engineering judgment. And you're relying on engineering judgment, which is setting a standard here.
It's saying, no, it's saying unless a deviation is justified by engineering judgment or study. They're saying a deviation. You have to justify a deviation. One of the documents that talks specifically about the sections of MUTCD guidance, uniform application, I don't know exactly because I don't have the first.
And when you read that, did it not say the word or?
Yes, it does. But it says a deviation is justified by engineering judgment or study. You have to have the engineering judgment or an engineering study to justify that a deviation is appropriate in this case.
Yes.
But it has to be in, in engineering judgment or engineering study. And usually, right, but engineers don't make these analyses without looking at the data to justify a judgment call on their part.
I, I beg to differ. This is not a total black and white. There are, they, they look at all these elements and statistics and so forth, but there's also a judgment there. That's why they are professionally licensed. And I guess in this particular case, they're professionally licensed as a traffic engineer. And I respect the concerns that have been expressed by Ms. Esposito and Mr. Berklin. I think that we should go ahead. If they disagree, we, we asked them to do this and we hear they're already reluctant, but then let them do the, the work to come up with a way to provide a safe crossing for the children.
Okay. Benny and then Learyn?
Actually, she had her head up first.
Okay, Learyn and Benny. It's been a while.
It's been a while, yes.
Thank you. Seventh inning stretch, everybody?
All right, well, I mean, I want to come back to this unifying theme of wanting to make sure that we provide a safe pedestrian crossing and safety for motorists who, you know, vehicles that will include both adults and children. Okay. Lonnie, could you come up and be ready to answer a question? I want to start with a question before I move on to my thoughts that have been developing. So the only way to allow safe passage across 84th Street is for traffic to come to a complete stop. So it seems to me the focus should be on how do we get traffic to come to a complete stop? And we have tools in the toolbox to do that.
That's a safe way. I just, I, I.
Well, actually, I think he mentioned that when he said zero speed. So I'm, I'm building on what he's mentioned before and what makes sense. Common sense is important, isn't it, John?
In this specific, in this specific location at that cross section of 84th Street? Yes, I would say that's a true statement.
Thank you.
Stop traffic is safest.
Okay. So there are tools to help achieve that. Right now, we have some tools in place, a signalized push button, walk signal. If everyone's following the rules of the road, that should be sufficient because that is what stops the traffic to allow kids to cross the street. But I'm very sympathetic to the concerns of so many parents who've written and called and came and testified in, before this council about concerns that somehow that isn't enough. So are there ways we can enhance the likelihood that traffic will come to a complete stop with other means? The school-related speed zone was the second idea. The first was your work, I think, on volunteer crossing guards because it seems to me to make sense that having an adult who can help shepherd kids across the street and make sure that ki, that cars have come to a complete stop before they enter the, the crosswalk is, is a really good idea. So I think your original goal for this solution here could be crossing guards. And that's one of the reasons why I like the inclusion of an assessment of how we would get that done here and perhaps in other areas where school crossing guards could be necessary. So I very much like that about the substitute resolution. You've also discussed the possibility of adding a no right turn on red where parents have said they need it. That seems very responsive to parent concerns and could increase the likelihood that cars come to a stop when kids cross. You've talked about signage. You and Cindy have had discussions, Jane have had discussions about signs that warn of a school crossing, children in, in the crosswalk. You've talked about looking at the timing of the crosswalks. And then this further study that could potentially enhance. But when we've looked at school zones, I think the question that's so hard to grapple with is, does that make sense that slowing down the traffic would somehow not increase the likelihood of traffic stopping? Why? Is it possible that, that data suggests that motorists are more likely to stop with the current situation rather than a school zone? Can you explain why this tool doesn't also enhance the likelihood that traffic comes to a complete stop at this location? Because I think that's what this all hinges on.
Sure. You know, as, as we looked at it to date, you know, based on the type of roadway that's out there, based on the current posted speed limit and, and just the, the application of a school speed zone in this area, the things that we primarily consider are that speed differential, but also kind of the street character and function of that, that roadway. The lack of, of open multiple access points. So looking at, you know, what do drivers expect in an area like 84th and Layton as you're, you're traveling down this arterial street, this median divided street? And all things considered, at least based on the data to date, based on the current application of a prepare to stop when flashing beacon that is there, the concept of slowing traffic down temporarily for a half hour in the morning and the afternoon with those current signal timing settings that were required to keep in place during all 24 hours out of the day, including the settings for the prepare to stop when flashing beacons. Based on our analysis and study, the, the reducing traffic down to 25 mile an hour basically creates more of a problem with the dilemma zone. The, the approach and the ability to stop at the crosswalk, speed by those beacons and not have adequate notification that you're going to clear the intersection. And then folks slow down and they, they actually probably have more of an aptitude to run the red light, extend through those current yellow clearance intervals. We, we just, in all of what we see with that creation of friction in that traffic stream in a platoon of cars that's traveling hopefully 45, maybe 46, 7 mile an hour through that area, by introducing that 25 mile an hour zone, you get a, a broad variation in, in compliance with some of those motorists. And when that happens, you create lane weaving, extra hard braking, the potential for rear end and, and, but not just vehicle crashes. I've heard a lot of people say, you know, the Public Works is worried about vehicle crashes and not pedestrians. And that, and that's not it at all. I can tell you in my heart of hearts, if, if I really thought this was the right thing to do, we'd have a speed zone out there. I mean, this wouldn't need a council resolution. It's, it's what we do all day, every day is look at things just like this. But I can tell you, as of today, that type of intersection, that type of control, those type of beacons, the current speed limit, the character of the street, a 25 mile an hour speed zone will be less safe. The statistical likelihood for someone to get hit in a crosswalk will go up. I firmly believe that as a licensed professional if we do this. I'm on the same team as the parents. I'm on the same team as Cindy and everybody in wanting to make things safe. It's just I keep coming back to if all of our data, resources, requirements, regulations, professional analysis, if all of those sources tell us this is a bad idea, what is the source that tells us it's a good idea? I don't know.
So, instead of helping us prevent the number of cars coming to a complete stop, this could cause driver confusion and increase, you're saying increase the likelihood of conflicts, change the flow of traffic in ways that could lead to more accidents and more, and less safety. So, while school-related speed zones applied in different circumstances could achieve a desired effect, in this case, it does not have the desired effect. It's not a tool that works well with the tools that are currently being implemented.
That's right. Our analogy was like a baby car seat. You know, you don't put a car seat in the front seat to be, there's a wrong way to do it and a right way to do it. It's not applicable in every instance. And so, when you put your baby in the backseat in a car seat, that's the safest place for your baby to be. But just because it's in a car seat doesn't make the front seat of the car the safest place. So, a right way to do it and a wrong way to do it. And based on the data, in Lincoln, this is the wrong application for a school zone. And that's what our traffic engineers have determined.
And hearing this and weighing it against the parents' desire for a safer crosswalk, with all the benefits that come with increasing the likelihood that children will walk to school, I am very supportive of the idea of the no right on red heading eastbound on Layton. The signage that will hopefully cause less driver confusion about what's coming rather than more. The repainting work in the crosswalk that will help make that more clear. And timing modifications that will allow safer passage. And through a study, potentially the possibility of working with LPS or private companies to determine the feasibility of adding adults at the crosswalk to guide children. Those seem like really good steps to address parental concern. And about all of those tools, you have not told us that they will make the kids less safe. You said they will make them more safe. This is the one tool you've said will make the intersection less safe. And so, to me, it seems like we should move away from this particular tool and look at all these other ones we have to work with and get those kids across the street safely.
Benny?
Yes, just a minute. First off, thank you both for sticking around and for the work you're doing in the data. I, she said most of the things that I want to say. And it's my understanding you're going to do many of those things no matter what we vote today.
Some of them happened today already.
And I spent some time in the intersection yesterday. There's a button you push and eventually the light changes. But more often than not, I could hear that car down the street that saw the light was yellow and accelerated. This won't, the school zone won't do anything about that. This won't do anything about that. One person who, as you said, there's a broad range of deviation in compliance. We can't really legislate or fix that. Public, the way the public drives, we need to really fix that. That's one of those behavior modification things we're not going to talk about. But the other safety measures, you're working on those now. And adding a school zone on top of that would make it less safe. That's, that's my yes or no question, I guess.
Yes.
That's correct.
Still do them, but full stop is, and full stop is there now.
Cindy?
Thank you. I heard a couple of things.
Hang on, hang on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Or you'll get the last word.
Well, no, no, she does get the last word on this one. Jane does, because this is Jane's substitute resolution.
I'll wait in line.
Okay. Thank you. So, I heard a couple of things. One, what studies show that this will be effective? And I think the parents were extremely competent in bringing forth federal safety standards from federal studies that showed that a school zone results in compliance by the drivers to 25 miles per hour. And Councilman Shob is right. We can't legislate, we try to legislate their driving, but we can't know what they're going to do behind the wheel. But the reality is, the parents also effectively showed that a child hit by somebody running a light doing 25 to 30 is going to be a lot less, have a lot less chance of being sacrificed than a child who crosses at 45. The other thing is, everything that's in this particular substitute resolution is already being done. I think it maybe expands a little bit, but what it does then is it throws more money that I don't think is necessary because we already have things being done. And I believe that if the Public Works is instructed to put in a school zone, that they will get whatever study they need. I know that Lonnie, we've talked about the price, the cost of putting in a school zone. And we had allocated $150,000 and you indicated it would be closer to 100. And then also, we talked about the school crossing guards. We talked about a uniform program citywide and the need for a policy. And the price tag that was brought to the stakeholder meeting was a quarter of a million dollars a year. And so, at this point in time, we're looking at 100,000 versus a quarter million dollars a year. And we're looking at something that can be done in a few months. And that these parents will have said they're going to send their kids to school using that. Now, we can go, you had told me that it wasn't that involved. We can go and take out the school zone should, when another school's built if we like. It's not that, that big a problem for taking that out. And certainly, I'm willing to allow that. That's probably going to happen because once, once LPS builds their school east of Eighty Fourth, Eighty Fourth is going to become the dividing line. And so, the kids from KHO, you'll have a few years where kids who have stayed there will continue to go. But then other kids will go to the, to the new school. So, I don't think this resolution adds anything new except asks us to spend more money on, on something that Mr. Berklin has indicated we're not going to get. But I think it's very important to know. We talked about that with different engineers comes different judgment. So, we, back to Councilman Camp's idea that this is subjective. Mr. Berklin indicated he would not have signed off on the Highway 34 project. But clearly, someone in the city, an engineer that wasn't him, did that. So, the, I won't be supporting this resolution. I'm appreciative of all they're doing out there. I mean, these parents have been fighting for six years to make sure that their kids could cross that street. And that's a really long time to pass. And it's really a shame that I had to bring legislation on their behalf in order to have some of these things done. But I'm glad they're being done. And it sounds like they're being done even as we speak, which is wonderful. And certainly, the studies are going to be done over the next several months that it takes to put together this, the school zone that I proposed. So, I won't be supporting the substitute resolution.
Yes. Last week amidst all the testimony, there was discussion of what a school zone is. Would you, again, for everyone's benefit, define the words "school zone"?
Well, school speed zone, I guess to me, proper application is one in which we are basically trying to slow down traffic in the traffic stream at an appropriate location. And really, most typically, those zones are at locations where you probably have lack of control. So, lack of a full signalized crossing. We talked a lot last week about the location down at Messiah Lutheran, where there's just a signed and marked crosswalk, block by block, intersection spacing. Lots of opportunity for, in fact, dozens of opportunities for pedestrians or cyclists to be crossing that mainline roadway. So, it's really intended to be installed at a place where you're trying to increase motorist perception reaction time to, to be unnoticed for that activity that kind of comes in from, from those side streets, those block by block areas, but certainly at an unsignalized crossing location. It's slowing traffic down to, say, 25 mile an hour or 20 mile an hour or whatever, you know, has been selected for that school speed zone so that you have time to notice pedestrians at the crosswalk approaches, that you can come to a complete stop and allow those pedestrians to safely cross. That's the, I guess, to me, that's the description, the intent of a, a school speed zone that's a good application.
So, what's this physically look like?
You know, typically, I would say it's a, you know, the ideal ones of the ones that we have that are along more of a collector or a minor arterial road that are a three-lane roadway here in town. You're all well aware, we have lots of these three-lane cross-sections with the center two-way left turn lane. Regulatory speed is 35 mile an hour. And it might go right by a school property, which is another key. It's apparent to people that, you know, I'm traversing by a school property if I'm familiar with the area. And then, you know, we're dropping those people down to 25 mile an hour, which is actually only a 10 mile an hour differential through an area, maybe a couple hundred to 400 feet in advance of the actual designated school crosswalk that really feeds that school building. Because the intent, again, is to really put these at locations where the focus is schoolchildren and really primarily schoolchildren using a crosswalk. Otherwise, we really attempt to do things citywide that benefit all pedestrians, all users of the intersection. And so, again, as we look at Eighty Fourth and Layton with flashers that are, that are, you know, going to be out there, you know, it would work during a half hour in the morning and the afternoon. I think create additional problems and make things less safe. But it also really doesn't do anything to address pedestrian safety the rest of the time. So, that's, that's really, I guess, Mr. Camp, to answer your question, an ideal school speed zone is at an unsignalized crossing right at a school that's used predominantly by schoolchildren. And the rest of the time, it might not be used a lot by folks. Otherwise, we'd want to put things in place to help those people as well.
Well, so, I mean, you could have something where you just have flashing yellows to say school zone ahead. And it's flashing, I believe, LPS, the public schools sets, starts and stops them so they don't do it on days that they don't have school or what have you.
Yeah, we actually set those.
Oh, you do? Great.
Yeah, we set the schedules for those. We've been working on that the last month. We get the new start and dismissal times from LPS and we program in when those flashers come on. And we do that at all of these locations.
I think you said roughly 300, 400 feet ahead of where they might cross. I can think of a number of school zones where there's no school right there. It's back in the residential area or something. But it does slow down. And so, if you're looking at a half hour each day, you've got 400 feet, which is a war block or good city block to advise motors to slow down. It would seem like that's good. And then we already have, you have the crosswalk that students are doing. They push the button, it turns to red. And so, I don't know, I guess, when we talk about school zone a lot, I think it's important to visualize what this is that, you know, it's probably the signalize, you know, advice to motors. It's like all the new signs around the interstate and everything about warnings that we use for somebody abducted or whether, or what have you. So, it's kind of advisory. It's generally pretty fail-proof. But now, you're talking about studying having crossing guards, which sounds good, but mechanical features there day in, day out, whether, regardless of weather and so forth. So, couldn't, couldn't you agree to, is it just the fact you don't want those flashing yellows to slow it down to 25? Is that what you're, isn't in your judgment?
No, I mean, our judgment is that that additional friction at this location will cause more problems, cause more crashes, cause more potential for folks to get hit in the crosswalk due to simply clearance interval issues at the current signal and the prepare to stop when flashing beacons that are in advance that are programmed for 45 mile an hour.
So, being devil's advocate, as I often am, you have.
No, it's fine.
Anyway, so, but so you have a physical human being there being a school crossing guard, but you still have 45 mile an hour traffic. How is, that seems a lot less safe for that individual trying, I mean, holding some sign or whatever.
Well, the agencies, and again, I've been blessed to travel around a lot of the country as a consultant and work on these exact types of studies, but I haven't been everywhere. But some of the really robust school crossing guard programs that I've seen are, I think, have been a great thing. Mainly.
Left it at 45 miles an hour, they haven't reduced the speed.
No. You know, at a location like this, an example is with the parents. And I think Ms. Gaylor Baird said it, you know, just the, how much do I trust sending my sort of first or second or third grader out there, even if I believe Lonnie and it's a safe signalized crossing? You know, it's a big roadway. There's, there's angst with that in today's day and age, more so than there probably used to be. But if you know that there's a school crossing guard there, I would think that gives you confidence in the crossing guard programs that I've seen where someone is out there in a fluorescent yellow vest. They've got the gloves, they've got the paddle. They're actually kind of continuing to mentor and teach these kids how to push the push button, come to the edge of roadway, be at the ready. All right, follow me. And they go halfway across the intersection. They make sure everybody clears. They're being cognizant of the light phasing and signaling. And then they get back and they step out of the way before the light turns green. And so, it becomes this very systematic, quite nice way for the younger children especially to say, hey, I'm confident, I can cross this intersection and I've got an adult here that's helping me do it. And so, you know, if we could find a way as a community to implement a, a more robust citywide crossing guard program, I say hallelujah. One point of clarification on the 250,000, that was simply, that's nothing related to Lincoln. That was some data that I brought to an initial meeting with Chief Blymeister to talk about other peer cities and samples. And that was what Kansas City, Missouri, Olathe, Kansas, Overland Park, some of them that have a very robust citywide program are doing through a totally privatized school crossing guard program. There's, there's an outfit called ACMS, which is all city management services. And they do crossing guard programs for a couple hundred agencies across about 30 of the states at many, many locations. And they come into your community and they, they sort of work with folks to set up the training program, the guidance docs, the scheduling, the vetting, the application process. And so, I think that's probably what's being referred to in here. There's, there's one business model to sort of say, hey, let's bring somebody in and really make this a great thing. And then there's probably other appropriate models where we can, you know, help staff, help identify locations, prioritize locations, and maybe start small and ramp that program up. So, certainly lots of options and opportunities for a, a citywide school crossing guard program, which would be way more safe than putting a 25 mile an hour speed zone out here.
So, you're saying going from 45 to zero is more safe than going 45 to 25 and then maybe go to zero?
In this location, yes, sir. I'm absolutely saying that.
Just to clarify, did you think, I mean, you, there are yellow flashing lights on the northbound and southbound approach. Yeah, there are today. I just want to make sure that we're on the same page about that.
Let Mr. Camp know that.
Right now, we have the flashing lights.
Let's go to Carl. Thank you, Roy. I actually like this idea about the crossing guard. I, in fact, I'm meeting with the, with Mr. Langmeyer. That was something that he had mentioned seemed a little cost prohibitive as I understood it. But I'm old enough, I was a, I was a safety guard back in the day. So.
That makes sense.
But, well, that's my point. I mean, we, Lincoln's a great volunteer community. So, are there communities where there are volunteers that do this?
There are. You know, I would say of the dozen or so communities that I'm familiar with, it's, it's less so that it's, it's a fully volunteer-only program. There are still administrative fees, administrative process. If you want to have an application process and who's scheduling those people when it's 10 below. So, yeah, there's options there. There's hybrid models, you bet. And maybe that's what we need to be talking about.
Thank you.
I think everybody's had a chance to speak multiple times.
I just have one follow-up question.
One question, and I'm going to turn it over to Jane for her follow-up and then call the roll.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, because you were painting this picture of crossing guards and safety, and you mentioned putting paddles up. But when you and I had the discussion, you indicated that the Mudco regulations, in your opinion, would prohibit us from putting paddles up because it may be a stop paddle might be in conflict with what the signal said to a vehicle.
Yeah, there's been some.
Do I remember accurately?
There's, there's been some disparity with the federal highway safe route to school program has some guidance online where they, they have allowed for folks at signalized locations to use stop paddles so long as that is up, only during when the signal is red. So, in terms of the volunteers, some places just have an assistant without a paddle. But certainly, there's options to also use a stop paddle even at a signalized location. Those people just can't be conflicting that with the green indication, as you can imagine.
Which of course is the whole idea, is to stop traffic, even if the light says red. Which, of course, is the whole idea, is to stop traffic, even if the light says red, so the kids can come across.
Jane's turn.
Okay. Well, first of all, I, I truly want to apologize to the parents of Cahill Elementary. I've been an elected official for seven years, you know, four years as a county commissioner and going on my third year of city council. I was unaware. I was really unaware of the issues that they were facing. And when they came before us and presented their concerns, their testimonies, I don't, I don't see how you could not be moved and called to action, to take initiative on this. And I think, I commend Councilwoman Lamb for bringing this to our attention as well and working with the families to try to come up with the appropriate solution. And certainly, I've reached out too because of the compelling testimony. We have to take action. We have to find solutions to this. However, I think the solution that is in conflict with what our, our engineering team tells us will provide a false sense of safety to those children. I don't think that's the right direction to go. I, I firmly believe that with the initiatives and the elements that we have talked about tonight that are being put in place as we speak and, and will continue to be implemented and rolled out will enhance and create greater safety at that intersection. But we don't know that. We don't know for certainty until we've, take the time and reach out and do an analysis, an analysis of the other school safety zones and the, the applicable way it should be installed. But most importantly, this intersection, I think, is very special. I think we need to look at crossing guards as an opportunity to, to really safeguard our children. I think it's a step in the right direction, along with a comprehensive study, maybe with an independent consultant. He'll say, "Well, I, I agree with Mr. Berklin in some cases, but this, this is a, an intersection that we've seen in other circumstances in Phoenix and, and Tucson that might merit this." And, and we might have to come back and say, "Yeah, we, we've got an independent voice telling us that this is a direction to go." But we won't know until we actually do the study. And that's exactly what the MUHCD, MUTCD recommends, that you do that study to tell you the right direction to go. I don't doubt you, because I think our bottom line is to do everything we can to safeguard the children that are going to be crossing eighty-fourth street. I think that's what all motivates us to do the, the right thing for them. And I think studying it, making sure that we have the things in place, it might be crossing guard. It might be crossing guards at other intersections that will be brought to our attention. But that's a program that we won't know until we do a study. And that's why I say we, I think we need to do the substitute resolution first. And hopefully, you all agree.
All right. For everyone's clarity, what I'm going to describe is what happens next. We will have a vote on the substitute resolution. If it passes, thank you very much, if it passes, we will then have another vote on this as the main resolution. If it fails, we will then have another vote on the main resolution. We clear? We're going to vote on this. If this passes, we have to vote on it again, because right now, we're just voting to substitute it. Okay? If it fails, this goes away and we vote on resolution on item number twenty-five independently. That's clear? Okay. Please call the roll.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
No.
Raybold.
Yes.
Shob.
No.
Camp.
No.
Christiansen.
No.
Motion lost, three to four.
Now, we've discussed this quite a bit. Are we going to have more discussion? Okay, now, we're back to discussing resolution or item number twenty-five.
Sorry, we're, we're, we're discussing the original posted...
Correct.
...resolution.
Correct. And this is discussion pre-vote. So, we're taking up where we were before Jane moved, introduced the substitute resolution.
Well, go ahead.
Yeah, Carl.
Yep.
One, one fact that I, I didn't think to ask about until just a few minutes ago was whether there's a before-after-school program at Cahill School. And, and apparently, there is. So, you do a school zone that applies fifteen or twenty minutes before school starts. You got people going to school before school starts for that and then staying at school for a couple hours after school's over. School zone hours are long gone. This, this doesn't help those kids.
Just so you know, Cindy, we'll do the same thing I did before and give you the final word, because this is your resolution.
Okay.
Okay? John?
I'm going to support this, but I'd also, I appreciate what Ms. Raybold has brought forward and I and what the chair has suggested that the proposed, although defeated, substitute resolution, I think is something maybe we can look at if there's a broader study of the city. I'd like to have maybe a pre-council where Public Works could tell us exactly what they're doing internally and see what might need to be substituted. So, I think there's some very good ideas there.
Don't say the words "pre-council," because I think we're already into December scheduling. Okay. Okay, just kidding. Thank you. Benny?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. A few months ago, I asked to join you guys, I asked for this job, and I thought it would be a little easier than this. So, a few months, a few weeks ago, Cindy asked me would I support this, and I thought, "Great idea, safety for kids." Since then, I've heard from a ton of parents who said, "Yes, what are you thinking about? This is a no-brainer." I've heard from a ton of people that said, "Why don't you just put a bridge over it? That would be the easiest thing to do. Put a pedestrian bridge across it." I've heard from almost as many drivers who said, "There's no way you need to slow down eighty-fourth." So, I've gotten no clear direction from the community. They are all saying, about a third and a third of a third saying, "Well, that's what we should do." And no matter what we decide here, someone's going to be upset. We're going to alienate someone. And what we're really trying to do is make this intersection safe for everyone. And there are competing ideas on how we should do it. There's some crash data that I appreciate being presented. There is testimony from family members and parents. We know the population on that side of town is growing and there's going to be another school eventually. Do we have the luxury of waiting until that happens to do that? For the last two weekends, I've spent in the Tico's parking lot watching traffic go through and then going out and pressing the button and waiting and walking across myself and seeing if I was, could get across in unlimited amount of time. And I'm still concerned about the way we, me included, as Nebraskans, drive in this community. We can't legislate that away, but we need some type of education program. My father, when I was really old, said, "I said, 'Dad, I can drive now. I know how to steer. I know how to run.'" And he says, "You can operate a vehicle, but you don't know how to drive." And those are different things. We have lots of people that can operate vehicles, but we need people who know how to drive better. And so, having said all those things, I'm going to make someone mad, and if I'm going to make a mistake, I'm going to err on the side of putting you in a school zone. And hopefully, that'll make it safer for everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Jane?
Well, in my other job, I deal with operations. And we constantly are thrown things and asked to come up with solutions. What's the best approach? How to figure it out and do it really fast? And I find that this is a really tough decision. I don't, I don't care how you slice it. And you're right, Benny. It's not as an easier job as people would like to make it out to be. But I always want to do things for the right reason and to come up with the right solution for the problem. And I am not convinced that creating a school safety zone is the right solution for this current problem that was so well articulated by the parents. So, I, I cannot support this. But I do hope that with all the support of my colleagues, that we will reintroduce my resolution and really try to, to come up with the best solution to safeguard our kids. And that's what motivates us all.
Mary?
These are tough issues.
Yeah.
But we exist to have a public hearing. We exist to hear from people in our community and to weigh what we hear against advice from experts. And sometimes, those things are in conflict, and that's what's making this so difficult. What we've heard from people who deal with traffic safety, which is public safety every day, people who are licensed and sworn to protect the safety of people on our roads and people crossing them, is that this particular tool in this particular location will not improve safety, but will reduce safety. So, as Jane said, this school-related reduced speed zone in this particular location provides a false sense of security. What does not, however, are the other things that we have worked together to ask Public Works to do. We've asked Public Works to respond to the parent who said, when he tried to cross this crosswalk, cars turning right on red threatened him. We are working on installing a no right turn on red. We've heard that signage could be helpful. We're working to install signage. The crosswalk could be more clear, so we are working to make the sign, the paint, to freshen up the paint so that the crosswalk is more clearly delineated for both pedestrians and motorists. We're looking at how to improve the timing of the crosswalk. And previously, we were entertaining the idea of, of how we could potentially work with LPS in a joint effort to improve safety and the likelihood that cars will stop for pedestrians with crossing guards. Those are all really appropriate measures that provide a real sense of security. Those are the things I support and will continue to support. It doesn't make sense to go against what the engineers are saying about safety in this case. And so, I cannot support applying this school zone in this particular location.
Anybody else? Cindy, we'll give you the last word before I call the roll.
Thank you. There's nothing fast about this. These parents have been fighting for six years. For so, for six years, they've come to their city and they've asked for a school zone to make their kids safe, and they've been told no. At this point, just in the last two years, the number of children on the east side of eighty-fourth that are crossing to go to Cahill has increased over sixty-two percent from a hundred and twenty kids to a hundred and ninety-five kids, that, plus the kids from Mickel and so forth. That's a huge percentage of increase, and we don't have time to wait. The time to act is now, and I appreciate all this being done. But these parents have said, "Hey, we will allow our children to walk to and from school if we have a twenty-five mile per hour school zone, because, gosh darn it, we'd rather, if our children are going to be involved in a pedestrian accident, we'd rather they be with us tomorrow because there's a twenty-five mile per hour zone than lose them altogether." And I think that's the most important. One of the things Mr. Langmeyer asked when he stood up in front of us, he said, "Look out here. Which child are you willing to sacrifice in order to get a school zone before we get a school zone? We can no longer turn a deaf ear." And while I appreciate the fact that we have traffic engineers, you saw in your packet that the number of people that they were showing crossing didn't in anywhere bear, bear a resemblance to the folks that were here testifying, that saw children, people who actually walked their children across the street, and they themselves, one gal was a runner. And she said, "Even as a runner, she was frightened to walk across." We've got letters from grandparents over in the low-income housing area that said, "Hey, there are kids that have to walk. They have no alternative. We need to provide safe travel." And we had signatures from eight hundred, over eight hundred and fifty voters that live in that area and drive that street who said, "It's not safe." I imagine, and a number of them have said, "Hey, I wouldn't cross that street. I wouldn't try and cross that street. It's just not safe, and I'm not going to put myself out there to be hit." And I think those are all extremely important considerations. I think as public officials, we have to put these families first. I'm with Councilman Shob. Always go for the safety of the kids. What we know, these parents, they're not going to let their kids cross unless they feel like if that kid makes a stupid mistake because of frontal lobe underdevelopment or whatever, that, and they do get hit, that it's going to be something they're going to survive and not something that's going to kill them. And so, parents are more willing to do that. I have appreciated the work that has been done with my colleagues. And I appreciate what Public Works is doing. I'm sorry it took so long, because we might actually not be here now. I don't know. There's no way to tell. But, and I do, excuse me, appreciate the, the efforts that are going forward to do the studies. What I know is that engineering judgment changes. We've seen that right here in our own city, Highway thirty-four crossing from Fallbrook. One engineer said, "Yes," signed off on it, and it went in. Another engineer now says, "No." I'm concerned a little bit about the power wielded. I'm concerned that a study is going to come and say, "Let's pull out all these school zones." And that the Public Works Director isn't going to be able to, to say no and we're going to be imposed upon to allow that to happen, or it may not even come in front of us, probably not. So, I appreciate the support of those for the kids, the children in northeast Lincoln who desperately, we even had a couple of kids get up and said, "Hey, we're going to be able to ride to school if you get a school zone." They're looking forward to that. Dr. Rauner testified from Partnership for a Healthy Lincoln. Hey, the, the fitness of these children is directly tied to their academic performance. Just getting them out that fifteen to thirty minutes before school and after school is huge. And this is the population that Partnership for Healthy Lincoln has been having trouble improve the fitness. And this is what he testified was a way to do it. Finally, I think that it's important that, that we recognize that the academic performance of these kids is not only important, but their health itself is of the utmost importance. And he really testified, and he approached me afterwards, and he said, "Crash data doesn't have anything to do with, with pedestrian safety, not really." I mean, we're talking about pedestrian safety, those kids making it home at the end of the day. And so, I just hope that my colleagues will support me in this, that I have no doubt that the, that a study will at some point be able to, to satisfy Public Works. And I, I hope that that will be true. And I think that if these other safety measures in the same instances, if they come back and the parents come back and say, "Hey, these other things have worked," well, I think we can, we are free to say, "Okay, we don't need this." But after six years of asking and the increasing, I think we err on the side of the kids. Right now, we err on the side of the kids, and we, and we make that happen. So, thank you for your support.
All right. I'd like to, before I call the roll, thank all the members of the council for each one of your goodwill and concern that you have expressed in each of your, from your own perspectives. Appreciate it very much. Please call the roll.
Eskridge.
No.
Gaylor Baird.
No.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
No.
Shob.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christiansen.
Yes.
Motion carried, four to three. Our resolutions on first reading are items twenty-six through twenty-eight. Ordinances first reading are items twenty-nine through thirty-six. Our pending list date certain are items thirty-seven through thirty-nine. Item thirty-seven will come off for next week, public hearing. On one item under upcoming hearings, you will see we have the hearing date of August fourteenth for Murphy Oil. Doing business as Murphy Express, I received a phone call from the Journal Star today. They were unable to get it in the paper for publication today. So, we would need to delay hearing on that one until August twenty-first at the five-thirty P.M. meeting.
And we'll deal with that next week, or do we need to deal with it now?
If we could do it now, then I can get notice out to them.
John has moved delay of that item.
Second.
Carl seconds it.
Thank you.
Discussion, please call the roll.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christiansen.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Mr. Chair, I'd move for adjournment.
Second.
Well, thank you, finally. I was worried for a moment. Moved by John, seconded by Jane. Please call the roll.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Camp. Christiansen.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Schob.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.